Is, uh, is, uh, for the purpose of discussing these bid packages for the miners event and convention center. So, starting out, Britt, did you have a schedule of, uh, of speakers today? Or is, do we just call them up? I think I would ask Brian. Oh, we do have that? Where we at? Oh, the big packet. Okay. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh, the meeting agenda, number one is the project update. Uh, who will be providing that for us today? Our parking director, Brian Silver, uh, will start out the agenda. And, uh, Brian, good morning.
Good morning, um, councilors. Thank you for joining us here this morning. Have a lot on our agenda today. Um, so hopefully we can move through this and get through it in a relatively quick time, so we do not take up too much of everybody's time. Um, lot of information included in your packet today. Um, we're asking for several things. One, um, we're going to be reviewing the results of bid package one. Um, we've got copies of bid package two. You guys have also received all of the bid package two information via your email, so you have digital copies of it. Um, but as you know, with construction documents, digital copies are very small if you print them off at your home. Uh, so we do have the nice, large copies here in the council chambers for you to review. Uh, have had several questions from, um, not only councilors, but from, also from our design team and also a couple members of the public as far as what everybody's role is in our project. So before we dive into a lot of these bid packages and everything, wanted to invite, uh, Mr. Bob Fitzgerald from K.A. to come up and speak and, um, just share what the city has agreed with K.A. of how the whole project is going to be working, what K.A.'s role is, and, um, all the services that they are providing the city. So I'm going to turn it over to Bob here at this point.
Uh, thank you, Brian. Uh, welcome, Mr. Fitzgerald, uh, from Kraus Anderson. Uh, glad you made the trip up here. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors and staff. Uh, pleasure to be here today. Um, let me introduce myself first. You know, Brian indicated Bob Fitzgerald with Kraus Anderson, uh, vice president and director of operations in charge of our Bemidji office. Uh, born and raised in northwestern Minnesota, um, small town of Thief River Falls, maybe some of you have heard of it. Uh, but been in Bemidji and been with Kraus Anderson now for 20 years. Been in Bemidji about 37. Uh, so good stuff. Uh, thanks again. Want to impress upon everybody that, uh, this is a, an absolutely wonderful project for the community and for the city, for the region. Uh, the regional impact you'll find is, is going to be fantastic. Uh, I was involved in the Sanford Center project in Bemidji from the very early going on. I chaired the task force there to get that through the, you know, through the referendums and the bonding and all of that, similar to what we did with you, helping you with the sales tax back in, once you hired us in the fall of 2017. Um, so as that, and I was mentioning to the mayor this morning, this project will be the largest project that we have on our docket out of our Bemidji office for this year. Um, and so very significant to us as well. And then we'll get the attention and has gotten the attention that it deserves and that you expect. Um, and I had mentioned to Councillor Johnson, I'm really here also to answer any questions you may have, um, because I'm, I'm sure there's some of you that haven't went through a construction management delivery process before. Um, it's a little bit different than a, say, a hard bid lump sum general contractor or a, um, unit pricing maybe that you're familiar with, uh, in other projects that you've undertaken in the city. Um, so open dialogue as well. I'm a believer in that. You can tell from meeting me prior to the meeting, I'm a little chatty, or can be. So, open dialogue. If you have any questions, no need to wait to the end of my portion of this. Just just fire away, so everybody's, uh, open and ready and gets the information they're looking for. Um, I like to condense things and keep things a little bit more simple as well. That's just kind of my MO, uh, as I've grown up in a small town and such, is that, so I, in addition to the packet, and I apologize to councilors, uh, Beyondich and Paulson, who aren't with us today, but I did hand out a large version of that org chart sheet on 11 by 17, it'll just be a little bit easier to see and view. And then in addition to that, I handed out a, a double-sided document, eight and a half by 11, that is mainly just kind of an overview and a description of construction management at risk approach to project delivery. Um, first, I want to commend you for undertaking this project. Um, what a visionary step that you all took to bring this project to the community. And I want to commend you for picking the vehicle. And what I mean by the vehicle is the construction management at risk. The beauty of that is that you bring all parties onboard early in the process, so everybody's working together, working in, with the same goals in mind, the same focus. And it's really, I liken it to a three-legged stool. Okay? If you've got a strong three legs on that stool, and that three legs being the design team, being Kraus Anderson, of course, the city as the owner, you all work in concert and you have a strong, strong piece of furniture there, right? So one of those tends to stumble or come up short, you're lopsided and you're out of balance. So that's really the important thing, is getting everybody onboard, working together early in the process, as I had mentioned since 2017, quite frankly, the end of 2017. Um, if you'll take a look at the eight, 11 by 17 page, um, that's really the kind of the guts of it, you know? And, uh, that's really where the benefits lie, and I'm a person that also is going to, going to focus on the benefits, not maybe the shortcomings in this circumstance, because it's a large, complex project of a general contracting delivery, because you've already chosen this delivery method. We already have us under contract. Let's talk about what we bring to the table with the delivery method. Um, so really, taking a step back, the responsibilities of the owner in this circumstance are, you select the construction manager, you've done that. You select the design team, you've done that. Um, you make decisions based upon input from those two team members, because we really are partners. Um, I liken it to, we're an extension of your staff. It's really who we are, um, as well as the design team's an extension of your staff. The design team and their sub consultants really are responsible for the design. They're going to provide checks and balances by reviewing the construction. They'll prepare complete documentation and they'll help us all interpret the documents. What was the design intent? What was the meaning of that going forward? As your construction manager at risk, it's, it's our job to prepare those preliminary budgets. It's our job to provide value management, uh, options, uh, to help align the budget and the design. And sometimes, quite frankly, gang, as you know already, there's tough decisions that have to be made. But it's our job to provide you with that information and our recommendations, but then it's, and then you filter all that and can make solid, informed decisions. Um, it's also our job for constructability reviews, checks and balances back to the design team. What they've designed on paper, can it functionally and practically be built in real life? Okay? Um, and then the construction contracts, the beauty of the construction manager at risk, which is again, the vehicle that you've chosen to drive or to take on this journey, is, as opposed to like the school, for example, the school's under a construction manager agency or advisor. They're still their professional partner, still providing all those construction management services, but the school district holds all the contracts, direct contracts. Under this, you shifted the risk, thus the name, to us. So we hold all the subcontract. So if a subcontractor fails to perform, that's on us to make sure that either they come up to speed or we replace them. Okay? Any questions on that piece? And then, of course, it's our, our responsibility to construct the project. Um, you know, in this sheet that I gave you, the eight and a half by 11, it says we may use our own construction forces. Um, that's typically reserved for private sector. In the, in the public sector, we look at that, you've hired us as your agent, as your advocate, as your partner. We will not be self-performing, okay? We'll be managing the project for you, again, as an extension of your staff. Uh, fees are determined prior to construction. Uh, if you recall back in September, I think it was September 29th, 2017, we provided a proposal, but at that time, you didn't know the final size, scope and schedule of your project. So we supplied you with a matrix, a table, that said, if it's this size project, here's our basic fee. And let's be clear, our basic fee is, is our profit, our overhead. Everything else we bring to the table as far as our project management time, our site supervision, that's cost of the work. That would be the same thing like a general contractor would provide, but you only get to see one number of theirs. You get to see everything here. And then, last but not least, that final bullet on there is, we look out for the owner's best interest. That's our job. As, uh, Councillor Baraboo had indicated, you know, to me, he's worked with our company on a lot of projects, always had a good experience, you know, sometimes the road takes some twists and turns, but you get there, you know, and that's the, that's really the sign of a strong team. And we look out for your interest in delivering that project. Um, but the basis of this is really, if you turn the page over on the eight and a half by 11, it says, what are the benefits of the approach? And this is what you're experiencing already. Uh, again, sometimes there's tough conversations, but there's good checks and balances. Okay? Um, there's good cost estimating, you know, based upon, and do you remember that cost estimating is based upon the information at the time? Sometimes things change after that estimate's been provided. I know some things have changed since we provided our, our DD estimate, which you set your budget on. Um, it can be fast-tracked. You chose to undertake that. We're doing the demolition of the Un's Field Stadium, uh, building at, uh, under, uh, stadium under this fast track. Um, we're doing bid pack ones, so we can get these things out and try to minimize any winter conditions and such, and keep the project on track of where your end goal is at, of when you want this, this facility opened for the community. Um, phasing and scheduling input, that's exactly what we've all talked about in getting to where we're at today and moving forward. Uh, design documentation can be minimized. Um, Eric's team and his sub consultants do a fantastic job of giving us the information that's necessary. Uh, so kudos to them on that. And it typically results in a more quality project, because you've pre-selected who your partner is, based upon their experience, their qualifications, and the value that they bring to the table. All costs are open for review. That, to me, is so huge. That's the, probably the biggest difference, um, besides all of the planning and partnership and teamwork. From a financial standpoint, when you get a general contracting bid in, what, how many numbers do you see from a, from a contractor? Be one, right? You don't see all the pieces to the puzzle, right? Here, you get to see everything, because truly, we are just stewards of your money and your project. And as you are stewards, financially responsible to the taxpayers, right? Okay? So you've hired us to take on that role in this project here. In that regard, it also allows you to structure your bid packages, and I know this from being a former city administrator myself, and being on different boards and foundations, you can structure your bid packages and scopes of work to encourage more local participation, right? Isn't that what we all want on that, too? We want as many local contractors and tradespeople going to work on this project, because then they'll take pride in that project, uh, for years to come. They can take their kids and grandkids and say, hey, I helped build that. That is so cool. Yes, Councillor Johnson?
Councillor Johnson. Thank you. So then, I guess, what you just said about us, about you kind of taking care of when something changes. Last week, we had quite a lengthy discussion about the change in the, because the bidding with, uh, the Un's Field demolition, and then there was a question about more money, and I guess that's where my confusion was last week, is we had a guaranteed maximum something or other, and because of some miscommunication, then Kraus Anderson came back to us and asked for more money. So I'm confused, is it, to, why that happened if we had the guaranteed maximum, like, could you explain that process for us, please?
Absolutely. A guaranteed maximum price, even if it's on a portion of the project, such as you mentioned about the demo project, it, it's based on a certain size, scope and schedule. Okay? When it was determined that you went out to bid, it was our understanding, and I think the city's understanding as well, that the school district had everything out of there that they wanted out. Okay? So the scope of the project went out to the subcontractors for quotes in this circumstance because of the size of the project. And it was based on a per, certain scope, right? That was meaning what was there, and a certain schedule. Okay? And that's how they put their numbers together. Well, and it came to our attention after the quotes were brought forth, that the scope really changed. Okay? The scope changed because there were certain items that were understood to be still there and included, and Masabe and the other quoters bid that in a manner, or quoted that in a manner, that they had salvage value in those items. Once that salvage value was removed, okay, they no longer could reduce their bid by that salvage value, so they had to bring it back up to cover their costs. That...
So, I guess I want to make sure that as we're moving forward, and we, we did kind of discuss this last week a little bit, that we don't have one of those surprises again, because, um, when we're getting our, the quotes and our bids, they're right at our budget. And so for this, this one to come in, and I do appreciate that Kraus Anderson was able to understand where we were coming from on that, but, you know, it, this was a small portion and just a tiny part. Now, i- if something like that happened where the difference was millions of dollars, that's, that's going to be a big problem. And so I guess I, I just want to make sure that as we're moving forward, um, that those things are happening. And, and I, I just need to put a plug in here for Britt, for, for you all, that she is our voice. Uh, she is the person who knows what's going on. She, she has the big picture when it comes to not only the miners, but the potholes around the town and public safety and the water main break that were on, on First Avenue, you know, that is her job. And so when, when Britt is saying, wait, we need to slow down, or wait, we need, we need a little bit more information, that is us saying that through her. And, and having that, um, I, I've heard some frustration that sometimes there's extra pressure, no, we need to hurry up. If she's saying, slow down, it's for a reason, and, and she has our backing for that, and I, I would like for Kraus Anderson to understand that, that, that she's our mouthpiece, and that's why we, we, we trust her to help manage this with her and Brian working together constantly.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Johnson. And absolutely, Britt and I, um, I, I had found out that there was, I, feedback, I always get feedback on how my teams are doing and things like that, and I'd gotten some feedback that there were some concerns along that line. So Britt and I had a very candid conversation, uh, a week ago? Almost more than that, then. Almost, it was a week ago Monday, so a week and a half ago, and, and she expressed those concerns to me. Um, so what we've done is we've taken that another notch, where we're meeting more frequently, uh, we're having conversations more frequently, so we understand. And, and as I'd mentioned to Britt, um, yeah, she knows, she's got the pulse, so we're going to follow her lead. Um, part of the push came from, you know, we're very schedule-driven and want to deliver what we promised, and that promise was based on this opening at a certain date. So that's really where that came from, not defending it, just explaining.
I appreciate that very much, because that's, um, one of the things that, um, that, that I, you know, it's hard for me, I, like I told you before, this is the first time, and so to have you here and have to explain things, um, and just making sure that we, each one of us councilors has something where we, we have passion that we're good about. Some people are budget people, some people are public relations people, and so we all work together as a team. Um, and then, like I said, Britt is, Britt is that mouthpiece, and she, um, you know, she's been doing a phenomenal job, and, and I appreciate that you've been having those conversations with her. That makes me feel better, um, about how we're moving forward, because, quite honestly, the frustration level in this room from some of the councilors was very, very high. Um, and I'm hoping that, I, I already feel better knowing that those conversations have happened. So I appreciate you letting me interrupt you with that question. Thank you.
Not an interruption at all, as, as I opened the conversation with, I'm very dialogue-driven, so that's what I want. I want to make sure that people are interjecting their questions. Uh, Mayor?
Uh, uh, thank you, Bob. I just want to articulate the perspective about this significant discussion we had with respect to Un's Field. That's passed us now, we're moving forward. I just want to make a comment that this was kind of an anomaly, and the reason is, it was an anomaly from my perspective, is that there was another entity outside of the city of Virginia that made a decision that we weren't made aware of, and that was part of the bleacher system for the Un's Field. Moving forward, we own all the property that where this is going to go on. We are going to be making the decisions about that. There's not another, uh, entity that has ownership of any, any property that we're, where, that we're going to be constructing, other than looking for an easement from, uh, for a roadway, but, uh, w- w- there's not another property owner, or we own all that property. So I don't anticipate this kind of a surprise is going to happen in the future. So I think that was some of the frustrations that, uh, we had, but it was an injection of another entity that did make us aware of what they were doing, based upon, you know, an agreement we thought that we had. So, uh, before we move forward, Bob, I'm going to ask, uh, if, Councillor Paulson, do you have any questions at this point?
Uh, not at this point, and I appreciate going over the organizational flow and chart. Um, I, but I will comment that just receiving some flurries of emails, uh, this morning, just with some updates, um, is a bit frustrating.
And Bob, was that eight and a half by 11 sheet you had sent in?
Oh, my apologies, Councillor Paulson. That is something that I had in one of my folders. I actually just made the copies this morning and decided to use this, since I found out that some councilors would not be in the room, um, that I'd make a hard copy, uh, to pass out, and then Britt forwarded those on to you. So yes, I, I totally understand that. I, I'm the same way. I like to get information well in advance of a meeting, so I can help to review it and help prepare myself. So that, that one's totally on me.
And I think just going forward, yeah, yep. And I think just going forward, um, just having that information, maybe to our city clerk who disseminates the agenda packets, maybe by Thursday, prior to a Tuesday meeting would be helpful to all of us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councillor Paulson. Uh, Councillor, uh, Beyondich, any questions or comments, uh, uh, before we move forward?
Not yet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councillor Baraboo?
Yep. Bob, I appreciate what Steve did at that last, uh, meeting very much, and I was pretty tough on him, uh, so Steve, I hope you don't hold any, uh, animosities. But one good thing did come out of that, and Brian brought it up, and so did Steve. We know that part of the old miners is owned by the school district, the back half, and you've already touched base to make sure that we don't have a deconstruction problem with that entity, uh, ahead of time on that one. So that was positive from everything that happened, uh, last week. So I appreciate that very much.
Very good. Yeah, I understand, is it the, kind of a locker room addition? Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Been in that rink a few times as an old hockey player myself, so, yeah, and played and coached. Um, so, you know, moving through this, again, Mayor, thank you for, for checking with the councilors that aren't in the room today and see if they have any questions at that time. But, um, you know, I mentioned, one of the other beautiful things about this, and it's a nice segue to your, to your comments, Councillor Johnson, is the next bullet item on there was, you know, not only are these costs open for review at any time, um, it's line item by line item, so you get to see everything that's included in our guaranteed maximum price, uh, which will be established once we get all the bid numbers in. Okay? That'll be your overall GMP. Um, and on that regard, in that GMP, we well carry a construction contingency, um, because I'm not going to sit here, gang, and, and tell you there's going to be no surprises. It's construction, it's reality, it's, there's the human factor, things will come up, but the, the owner carries a contingency in a project like this, the contractor carries a contingency for different purposes, but to help solve some of those issues. But you have that budget certainty. To Councillor Johnson's point, um, as far as surprises, uh, if nothing changes in the size, scope or schedule of the project, because remember, I mentioned that that is what our GMP will be based upon, a specific size, scope and schedule. If nothing changes in that size, scope or schedule, and we exceed that GMP, remember, I emphasized those three things, then it's tough too bad K.A. But if there are changes to the size of the project, or the scope of the project, um, or the schedule of the project, there's obviously costs that would be involved to subcontractors and to ourselves on that, we would be looking for a change on something like that. Okay? Just can, again, open conversation here. Um, but they're minimized, okay? They're minimized. Uh, the guaranteed maximum price is then obtained. Uh, any project savings at the end of the day, so vice, on the flip side of that coin, it's tough too bad K.A., if nothing changes in that size, scope or schedule, or even if there are additive changes that add to that guaranteed maximum price, project comes in better, say it comes in ahead of schedule or better than we anticipated, any savings between the final actual construction costs, okay, the cost of the work, and the GMP, that is realized as a savings to the owner. We monitor that as we go through the process. Where are we at in relation to the GMP? Where are we at in the use of our contingencies? Because there's going to be times, and I know this happened, for example, at the Sanford Center in Bemidji, um, they had to make some tough choices to forego some things, uh, at the beginning of the project. But as time went on, they were able to buy back, because there was, the G, things looked good at the GMP stage later in the game, as well as the contingency, you know, they, they two tie together. Um, so they were able to buy back some things. And quite frankly, you're going to be asked some of those tough questions today, you know, to make sure that we're making the budget and the, the design align at this point of the game. Okay? Um, you know, one of the common misconceptions in a CM at risk is that the competitive bidding goes out the window. That's far from the case, especially in a public setting, because there's the Minnesota public bidding laws that we have to abide by.
And before we get into the section about the competitive bidding process, I'd just like to make a point, if I may, uh, looking at, you know, the, why we have a construction manager at risk, because this is a project that can't possibly manage in-house, and so that's why we do professionals do that, that's why we've done that. So, but one of the things I'd like to point out is that, um, you know, uh, the local participation of trades and labor is part of this agreement that we have with you, but the most important one of all, from my perspective, is that when you do have a change order, which happens on a regular basis, I know Councillor Johnson is frustrated, uh, more than any other councillor about change orders. We are all frustrated about that, too. However, you know, the, the change orders are minimized, but they're at cost. You know, in the private sector and other, and, and other situations where there's a change order requested by a contractor, not only is that change order requested for, uh, the work to be done, for the costs associated with that, but there's also an additional fee to that contractor for that. In this particular case, you know, the changes are at cost. So I, I do want to make that as, as a very important factor as we move forward.
Right. For example, right now, our, our fee is, our fee would be on those things, because that would become part of the GMP. That's two and a half percent of the cost of the work, okay? Typically, what, what the mayor's referring to is, let's say in a hard bid scenario, general contractor, a lot of the time, you'll see fees go up to around 10-plus percent on change orders. You know? They take a little, maybe a little bit less early, but then they, they mark it up big time, uh, on changes. Um, the reason that things are minimized, though, is that we've all been working together. You know, through the planning and the design, you know, the, the council, the city staff, uh, the design team and Kraus Anderson, even with input from trade contractors, you know, even in the early going of that.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Um, so, again, public bidding laws, we're, we're abiding by those. Uh, it's been interesting in taking public bids in the virtual world, uh, but we've done that, uh, not only on this project, but on many of our projects. The school district, as a matter of fact, I believe, is getting their first set of bids in today. Um, and so it's very interesting with that matter. So every, every section of the work is competitively bid, the, you know, the advantage with Kraus Anderson is to, guys like Carl and Steve are spending time with subcontractors to answer their questions, because like anything, the better information we have, the more information we have, the better decisions we can make, or in their circumstance, the better bids they can provide. Um, you know, better bids, fewer surprises and better cost control. That's all from that eight and a half by 11. Probably one of the, the things, I'm kind of a visual person as well, and again, why don't we take a moment and see, does, uh, Councillor Beyondich, any, any, may I?
Yeah, sure.
Is there any questions?
Uh, first, Councillor Beyondich?
No, I, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Paulson?
I'm good as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Thank you. Um, so being more of a graphic or a visual person, I turned to the 11 by 17. Um, I always bring to it people's attention, take a look at the org chart on the left and the org chart on the right, and I always ask the question, there, there's, there's a line missing there. What line is missing? You know, and, and if you look at it, it's really that line between the architect and the construction manager. Remember, I talked about that three-legged stool?[1795.33] Here's your three-legged stool right there. That's a top-down version of that three-legged stool, shall we say. And then in this circumstance, follow that blue line because those trade contracts go right to K.A. And again, being a person that likes to accentuate the benefits, the teamwork spirit and the open communication. Yep, did we have a little bit of stumble on the demo? Yes, we did. Did we step forward, all of us? Yes, we did. Did it give us the opportunity to improve our communication? Absolutely. And I've, as a matter of fact, for the people that are here, and also Counselor Paulson and Counselor Beyondich, I did pass out a copy of my business card. So if you're, you know, the buck stops with me, quite frankly, with our office. And that's right here. I'm not going to steal, you know, a line from our past presidents, but that's really what happens. But it's my responsibility to make sure that they're on track, and if something gets off track, feel free to call me directly. But Steve and Carl are our main conduit.
And to that, we appreciate having your number with Steve and Carl on board as our local. We, our process is to, if a counselor has questions or comments about an issue, or have a question for you, or for Steve, or for Carl, or even for our record for Eric, that we would use our city administrator as that conduit.
Good.
Thank you.
You know, and that's important. We find out in projects, as long as every team member has one point person, that's when you're going to have your best communication. They're kind of that gatekeeper of the communication in and out of their portion of the team. You know, the project budget, that was established early before the design phase was complete. We gave you a strong budget at design development, and then we moved into construction documents, and it's out on the street now, and we're going to be asking that Bid Pack Two go out on the street shortly as well. Continuous monitoring of that budget to make sure that everything's in line and it's tracking well, and then giving you feedback through Brit at that point, and Brian, that we are on track on the budget, and here's where we're at. You know, the cost control, again, from early on in the design, we're constantly giving you information on that, along with the design team and how they align, and you can make informed decisions at that point. Value management. Sometimes people look at this as value engineering, which a lot of people think is a swear word. That means you're cutting things out. Not necessarily if you're making those decisions early on. You can, you can pick and choose what things are important to you. It's our job to point out what those decisions may, how they would impact cost and schedule and scope of the project. Scheduling, if you look way back in Brit's office, and I was glad, they brought a smile to my face, Brit, to see that still up on your wall, it's a large blueprint-size, really milestone schedule of the entire project. Now, has that moved and need to be adjusted? Absolutely. It looks like we maybe need to get you a new one. Make a note of that, guys.
And eleven, an eleven by seventeen version like we had the last time for all the counselors as well.
Absolutely, yeah. I think we had that in our proposal, as a matter of fact, yeah. The savings we talked about, you know, the difference between this and a general contractor, who reaps the benefits of any savings between their bid and the final construction costs? A general contractor. They do. General con, not them, not these two guys, the general contractor does. In a construction manager, it's yours. You know, we've negotiated a fair and equitable fee for our services, and, you know, there's an old saying, you know, it's, you know, pigs get, or hogs get fed and pigs get slaughtered, right? Well, we feel that we've negotiated a fair and equitable fee. That's all we're looking for. Any return savings go to you, and you also get some people that'll, some construction managers will say, well, we'll split it with you. Jeez, isn't that nice of them to split your money with you? You know, that's the way I look at that one. 100% of the savings go back to you. Our fees are fixed at the time that the GMP is established, and the only way they do go up is if there's additive changes. But we bring those things to you as a team, and then you look at that and make decisions on that. And we'll vet those before they come to you as well through the subcontractors. Bidding, close communication with the subcontractors, everything's there. We talked about that. We talked about, you know, the minimal change orders, et cetera. If you look on the left side again, down by the trade contractor box, those items really spell out, we're your advocate, gang. We're an extension of your staff. You've hired us for our professional services to manage your project. Large, complex project, fantastic project, going to be a beautiful building and a beautiful facility for the, for the community for years and years to come. We work hard to minimize those changes, because what we want to be able to do is when we finish this project with you, we go on to another community. They want to know somebody they can talk to about how we did. That's our reputation. That's important to us after 123 years of being in the business this company has been, not me, but the company has been. That's probably one of the biggest things. It's in our core purpose. Our core purpose is to build enduring relationships and strong communities. This project's going to do both of those things. It's so cool. It's just fantastic. Full-time project supervision. You'll see our job trailer out there. We well have a seasoned onsite superintendent. His name is Gary Francisco. That might be a good segue to the org charts, but before I get too deep into that, if you look at, in your packet, the stapled packet, turn back in to about the fourth page, that's the overall org chart, and that shows the city. It shows our relationship with, your relationship with us, as well as with DSGW, and then it shows that the subcontractors filter up through us before they get to you. That means we hold the contracts, we hold the risk. And then DSGW does have some subconsultants under their arm of things, or leg, and you can turn the next page, and they're the lead designer, and they have firms from the area, as well as, you know, like SEH and Northland Consulting Engineers, et cetera, providing information on the various disciplines, such as civil engineering, structural, and mechanical, electrical. So that feeds into there. If you turn to the next page, that's a snapshot of our team. You'll see that guy in the left corner, that's me. Again, Vice President, Director of Operations of our, of our Bemidji office, but I'm considered the project director of this office, or of this project, excuse me. And then Steve's our senior project manager. He'll be, you know, that overall on the foot, feet on the ground, especially in the pre-construction stage. He'll be leading all of the pre-construction with Carl. And then when we get into the construction, it really gets to Carl and Gary Francisco, who I mentioned just a minute ago. Gary's been in the industry 30-plus years. He's been with Kraus Anderson 29 of those years, I believe, and just a heck of a guy. Right now, he's finishing up a school project, and he'll be coming to take over this project when that is completed. Lives north of Grand Rapids, so I was joking with the mayor before, I always tease him and other people from Grand Rapids. They, they, they're only from the Iron Range when there's IRRB money involved, right, Counselor? Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then this team is supported by Channing Bowe. He's an assistant project manager. He'll be doing different things behind the scenes, as well as Clara Hussman. Clara is our project coordinator, that administrative staff person who's going to keep all that paper flowing and those things taken care of. So I would stop with my part of the presentation there. It went a little longer than I'd anticipated, but good stuff, good information, and I would open it up to any questions that we didn't address during the dialogue.
Okay, first, we'll go to the phone line.
Yeah.
Counselor Paulson, any questions or comments about the explanation that was given about the construction manager's risk project moving forward from Mr. Fitzgerald?
No, I had reviewed all the information that came through in the packet, so it's just helpful to go through audibly, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Beyondich?
No, thank you.
Hey, thank you. I see that Counselor Baranzelli, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes. I want to thank you. Before this morning, there was a lot of gray area in my bald head, but you've clarified it, and I, it's, I understand. It's, it's, it's good. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I'm glad it was helpful.
Well, we thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, for your presentation. There are no other lights on and comments for concern. We do have one from our finance director, Sherry. Sherry, could you speak loud enough so Pam can hear?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, for your presentation. And not to belabor this, but since I have both Steve and you in the same room, I want to confirm that the offer that Steve gave the council and the city, that we would, for the scope change, because you mentioned about scope changes, still stands with the LAP at $144,413 and some odd cents.
Yes, that's correct. Steve brought that to my attention immediately. I applauded him for taking care of it. That's the confidence and the trust that I have in my team. Yes, that number stands.
Okay. I just want to make sure Pam got that in her minutes.
Pam, did you get all that on the LAP?
Not quite, sorry.
Well, I think we'll have, we'll have Sherry call you to clarify for the minutes.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
If I may, Mayor, Pam, if you need anything from us, please contact Steve, and he'll supply whatever you need.
Okay. Will do.
Thank you.
Having nothing further, I'm going to turn it over for a, more of a project update, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Eric Wedge with DSGW Architects.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Appreciate it very much. It was very informative and a lot of clarity moving forward. So thanks again, and thanks for making the trip up or down from Bemidji.
Absolutely. You're welcome. I was glad to be here.
Go Beavers, huh?
There you go. That's my alma mater. Actually, for Bob Peters, that was a lot of fun.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Eric Wedge from DSGW, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Council, for having us here today. I'd just like to say that DSGW and Kraus Anderson have been producing work together as a team through various means and methods that Bob went through with you today for many, many years, and we found it to be very, very successful. In fact, we're just completing a successful project in the Grand Rapids area that we utilized this similar process with for a private client. But we've been doing this for a long time together. And as, as Bob said, you know, they have a credo, and DSGW has a credo, too, and that is enriching communities through architecture. And I truly, being a community member, believe that this project will enrich the quality of life of our community, and we will see with everything going on with the school and the miners at the same time, the MAC, these are very, very important projects, and you have our utmost diligence in reviewing the documents and providing the best value for your funding and budget that we can put forth. But really, today's presentation from me, we have a thick packet, and I'm not going to talk nearly as long as Bob, not that Bob was long-winded, but the fact that I want to be respectful of everybody's time. And as Bob said, I will be, I'm open book. If you guys have questions, stop me at any time, and I'll be able to answer questions. And I'm sure as we get into, deeper into the packet today, there'll be a tag-team process between DSGW and Kraus Anderson and the council, just like Steve said, a three-legged stool of partners trying to provide the best product for you. So with that being said, I think back in December, or back in February, we came to the council with a project, trying to align it with your funding that you had in place. And at that time, we were told, no, we want to keep moving forward with the full scope of the project that the community had come forth with and designed, and your community partners that maybe are listening online, that are not here today, helped make the decisions to the set of blueprints that you have here today. So really, the first page in your document is the page seven, for those online, is the full-blown site work package, including showing all of the landscaping that's with it. That was bid out in, we managed this project into several phases and several bid packages, and the reason why we did that is to coincide with your funding. So the first package was the demolition of the Ewing's Field, and that managed the IRRB funding, and Brit and Brian will get into your funding sources later. We then had to break the project down into Ewing's Field development to match some funding from your bonding, your sales tax bonding, so that you could clearly define what was outside the perimeter of the building. And then we bid Bid Package One of the Event Center, which was all the long lead time items, because we don't want to get into winter construction and have to be doing a bunch of ground thaw and free, unthawing the ground to be doing those improvements. So your precast, your steel, your concrete footings and foundations, and all the underground improvements to support the building on the soil conditions that we've had. That's why we brought this project up into several bid packages, rather than taking this as all one big project. We would be looking at going out for bid for it now. By the time we were to process bids, it would be into fall construction. In fall construction, we're pushing the schedule of winter conditions, which ends up costing more money for you. So we were really trying to deliver this project to manage the schedule that was originally put forth. So today, it's just a review page. I guess, is there any questions on the site plan? This includes the Sixth Street, the roundabout, parking lots both on the east and west side with a full-blown landscape, and that was what was requested that we move forward with in construction documents. Now, we do understand, when you, we'll get into it later, that you may not own parcels of property, and that's why we took alternates, so that, as Bob said, tough decisions can be made now, or they can be delayed to be made later on, when you would have opportunities to have easements in place to construct a road on it, for example, with the Our Savior's Lutheran Church property.
That brings me to that question, since I happen to be the treasurer of Our Savior's Lutheran Church.
Counselor Bearbo.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
I should have let you recognize me.
We're good.
We had a finance meeting last night, you know, and that was brought up in discussion. Our congregation has not decided if it's going to be easement or sale at this point. What is your timeframe where you need to have an answer back for that road? Because this is critical, because, you know, churches have to go through a process that's at least a month long, and then we have to have a special meeting, especially if we're going to sell, because the congregation has to vote on that.
Counselor Bearbo, I'm going to bring Steve Trudeau up to the podium to answer that question, because their bids were, from the time we received bids to the time that they have to award, was 65 days. But I will let Steve answer that question, because truly, that road doesn't need to be constructed until next year.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
But the question would be for Steve is if the, when we get into that part of the presentation, if the low-bid contractor is willing to hold their bid beyond the 65 days to meet the requirements of...
I don't need any more than that answer, because we'll, we'll have that done with the work of Brit and our representatives from the church that are meeting with her long before that time. I just didn't want it to be done, have to be done this summer, because that may not happen with our church. Okay, so I don't need Steve to come up at this point?
Well, I do have to follow up to that, because since you mentioned the easement for the Our Savior's Lutheran Church, just for your information and for the rest of the council's information, that Brit and I met with two board representatives and the pastor from the Our Savior's Lutheran Church, and they made some requests from us. And one of the requests was, is they're going to be meeting with the church board, but they, they want to know what the property is worth, and we're going to try to do an appraisal. We're looking for, we're going to be looking for approval from the council to do an appraisal of the easement, what, what's, what that would cost, that strip of land, what that would actually cost. One of the board members is a realtor, indicated that it doesn't make any difference if it's an easement or if it's a purchase. Basically, it's the same thing, but they were, they wanted, they want an appraisal on that strip. And so we were going to be, we'll be coming to the council moving forward, asking for the authority to do that in order to help accomplish that goal and objective, but in order to get the appraisal done, it might not be done in 65 days. It may take a little bit longer. So to my, to our, to that point, looking at that contract and moving forward, we still haven't, we still have work to do in trying to work with Our Savior's Lutheran Church in negotiating and acquiring an easement for that piece.
That was brought up at our meeting last night, but I figured they're already working on that portion of it, because it hadn't been finalized through the city yet. So we, we know, and they understand, the members that were on that visitation with the city, they understand that we have to run through our process here at the city, too.
And Brit did update us yesterday. We do a weekly call with all team members, and she did update us at that time. So, thank you, Charlie.
But before we move forward, Counselor Paulson, any questions about, for... Before we move forward, Counselor Paulson, any questions about, for Eric Wedge at this point?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Biondich?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, please continue. Thank you.
Well, page eight of your packet is just a recap of the floor plan that was approved back in February. It involves a 500-seat convention center, a arena, main arena, that sits about 2,000 people, and then a secondary practice rink or back rink that is being planned for 24/7/365 summer ice. As we recall, the main arena will be utilized for multiple events, so it does not have the capacity to do summer ice. Your secondary rink will be the summer ice rink, with the supporting locker rooms in between. And if we go to the second floor, we do have in the packet, it is the full build-out of the dryland training room and the two fitness rooms, along with office space and circulation space for the arenas. The primary arena, the main arena, still maintains its walking track around the perimeter, and basically, it's 120,000-square-foot building, plus or minus, and it does involve two canopies. One canopy that would be for the main arena, and as was requested by the council, we did add that second canopy that in front of the event and convention center. And we did take bid prices, bids for both of them separately, so that if funding doesn't match your resources, you can choose to take one out to the other or add them both back in. So...
Thank you. Britt, has a... Pam, our city clerk, question?
Not a question, just a little note. Eric, please, at the podium, it's kind of hard if, to hear when, if you're talking and turning away from the microphone. The microphones, we have to pick the noise, or the voices off the speakers in the room versus the actual microphone. So, it's just, please try to remember to talk into the mic. We're going to probably get a lapel mic for the podium eventually, where the voices will not fade when you turn your head or back away. So, if you could just either maybe hold it in your hand, so it's closer to your mouth. I'm not sure. I'm just trying to come up with some ideas, because you break off now and then, so it's hard to hear the full conversation. Thank you.
I'll just look at the front of the council and talk, rather than try to look at Steve or Charlie. So...
Not that you need a neck brace in order to accomplish that, but thank you. Thank you, Pam. Eric, please continue.
So, you know, what's before you today, later on in the packet, is our request to, as we talked about, three packages have already been bid. One would be the demolition of Ewing's Field. The other one is Ewing Field's site improvements, and Bid Package 1 for the MAC, which was the structural steel, the precast, the concrete, the footings, the foundations. I guess another important part of that Bid Package 1 was the design build of the ice plant. So, that was what was in Bid Package 1. What's before you today is a request to go out for bid with Bid Package 2. And Bid Package 2 includes all the mechanical, all the electrical systems, all the food service systems, and then all the interior architectural finishes, all your doors, all your windows, your roofing material for the facility. I do have, and I apologize for the council members that are online, as we talk about alternates later on, I do have some of the exterior finishes that was previously looked at at previous meetings, just for reference and review if we, when we get to that point. But truly, the request for today is to put the balance of the project out for bid, utilizing the services of Kraus Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. So, Bid Package 1, now we're going to Bid Package 2. How many more bid packages are, do we anticipate? Is there's a series of them coming forward?
This is the last bid package, so that would allow Kraus Anderson to complete their pricing exercise and be able to give the city a GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price.
That's what I was getting at. Thank you very much, Eric. Okay. Is any counsel handy? Yes. Go ahead, Pam.
Thank, this is Julianne.
Julianne. I was just going to ask if you had any questions or comments.
Thank you so much. Eric, in looking on page 10, it's just in the packet, it's page 10 from your, I guess it's from Kraus Anderson, but when it gives the total of $38,118,121, could we get a clarification when we gave the approval at the special council meeting for the whole complete? I thought that was $37 million. Could I get a clarification on the total we approved? Was it the 38,118?
I'm going to refer to Steve Trudeau, who put together the guaranteed maximum price at the end of design development, and he will be able to answer that question. In fact, if there aren't any architectural questions at this time, I will turn the balance of the presentation over to Steve, because we do want to match secured funding with pending funding and your total budget cost. So, Steve, if you would mind coming to the podium?
Thank you very much, Eric. Steve Trudeau from Kraus Anderson, good morning. And Julianne Paulson had a question regarding the total based on page 10. If you could answer that question for her, and then we'll move forward with the rest of your presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. The question, I believe, that Counselor Paulson is asking on page 10, that summary sheet is really the funding portion snapshot that we've been identifying with the city, what's secured to date and what is hopeful and pending. The combined total of those equals $38,118. That number is a little different than where we're currently at on an estimated project cost. That will lead us further into the discussion today.
I guess my, if I could interrupt Steve, my question is, what did we approve? And I don't know if Sherry could give me that, or Pam might be able to find that information. What figure did we approve at the special council meeting?
And she'll be looking it up for you, Counselor Paulson. Just a clarification thing from Steve on page 10. I know you're asking for what the project costs are. When you're looking page 10, these are the revenue sources that we, that we are anticipating getting.
Right, right. I understand.
Right. Okay, she's trying to get you that answer right now.
There's a difference there.
Yep.
And I'd like clarification on it, please.
Okay. Do you have to go downstairs? Okay. Sherry doesn't have that answer. She's going to go down there and get that answer for you, and then...
I was just going to look through the minutes to see if I can find it.
Okay. Well, Counselor Paulson, both our city clerk and our city finance director will be looking for that answer for you, and we'll just continue to move forward with the rest of the presentation, just to push things along a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve?
I'm going to have to bend over a little bit to be sure that I'm clear into the mic for everybody to see.
Put a couple of phone books on top of that microphone.
Yeah, really, just following along in the packet handout that we have given everybody. Page 10 really is kind of the beginning of the money side of our discussion. We talked to Britt and Brian Silver about, you know, this piece, if there's any additional comments that you all may have regarding the revenue, the funding sources, if you will, to pay for the project. Any comments from Britt or Brian, and tell me, will you get the feedback that Sherry or Pam are looking for?
Yeah, I can mention that...
Britt, please. Thank you.
The state deed money, the 2019 bonding bill from the state, the $12 million, we do have the signed grant agreement. We're waiting it for it to be signed by the Materials and Management Office. It's the last signature we need. But we are on track for that, for the $12 million. We have sent in applications for IRRB Part II Utilities Infrastructure requests in the amount of $500,000, and then IRRB Part III Miners Arena Demo requests we cannot submit until December of this year.
And these are projected funding sources as moving forward, and in conjunction with the meetings that we've had with the IRRB about the structure, the funding for each phase of the miners project moving forward, and we meet the requirements that's set forth in their budget and their rules and regulations, that the $500,000 is submitted now, and we can't submit the $382,000 for the utilities till December. That will be their next funding year, correct? Okay, thank you very much for that clarification, Britt. Any other questions about that? Brian Silver, our Park and Rec Director slash Library Director, Brian?
Just wanted to put counselors' minds at ease. I know the Park and Recreation Commission, along with several counselors, have been very concerned with the tax generation over the past couple of months, as far as it goes for paying off these bonds that we have already taken off. In talking with Sherry yesterday, she did let me know that our April estimated tax generation was still on track for what we had, what we had budgeted to bring in for that 1% sales tax. So, even though our economy has taken a downturn here for the past couple of months, it looks like, thanks to several of our big-box retailers that we have here in town, we are still generating the revenue that we need to make those bond payments.
Thank you, Brian. And to reiterate, this was a process that, it took effect January 1. There's a, there was a learning curve still for those businesses who didn't understand or realize that they had to charge us 1% sales tax in making those adjustments and making those schedules to make sure that we're on track to pay that over a 20-year period. We anticipated there'll be a little bit of an adjustment period for the first couple of months of 2020. That did occur. Those corrections have been made, and the April numbers show that we are on track now moving forward. So, thank you for that, Brian. Sherry, did you have that information?
Yes.
Counselor Paulson, Sherry will be providing that information for us now.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Sherry.
Hi, we, Counselor and Mayor, we did at the February 28th, Kraus Anderson, we went with the $38,837,806. Now, why, probably, Counselor Paulson, if I can address your question, you'll see that there is, we have estimated a $500,000, I triple, sorry, $382,000 IRRB funding, and then the Utilities Infrastructure request. So, those are additional funds in there, like Steve mentioned.
I think what Counselor Paul says is asking is that she understands that the funding source that we have are estimated to be $38,118,121, and the question was, is that what we approved moving forward for the budget? Or what is the actual budget figures? Is it more than this or less than that? So, I think that was, so the more. So, she's asking, what's the more? So, you're saying $38,800? $38,837,000, Counselor Paulson, $38,800. Go ahead.
Is that what we approved?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess my point was, when it, on page 10 with the funding sources, I was just saying if there's a discrepancy there, that because of the optional additional bonding that we could request for, that that number could be different. So, I just wanted to make sure that we were, I guess, at the point where it's a, where we've already agreed on that's the price. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Sherry, would you clarify, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Paulson?
And Sherry, if you could just, Sherry, if you could talk into your mic, I'm so sorry.
Okay, it's right here. Yes, because we were going to have to do a secondary bond or another bond on this, 220B, and we were projecting a $5.888 million bond. So, obviously, this is a little bit less because of the IRRB coming in. We are not going to finalize that probably until August or September of this year, because of everything in the economy, the way it's going. We met with bond council, was it last week, Britt? And so, obviously, the smaller that second bond is, the better it is. But we're hoping, like Brian Silver had mentioned, we did hit our record, our mark for April. We need at least $125,000 a month in sales tax revenue to pay that initial 2020A bond, which gives us a little extra in there. And we were anticipating, by taking out the second bond, the sales tax would also pay that second bond.
And I think just to clarify a little bit, this page 10 is kind of the prelude to what Kraus Anderson's here to talk to you about today. We had approved the budget of $38,837,000. However, we only have $38,118,000 in funding sources. There is a gap, and we need to determine how are we going to fund that gap, or what are we going to cut? That is today's discussion.
And that was my question, Britt. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Julianne. Yep.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Okay, Steve?
Yes, thank you. So, that does help clarify, you know, the revenue sources available, how much money we're currently looking at to pay for the outcome of the project that can, you know, be fully maximized to that, to that amount. So, if we move forward then, if there's no other questions on that page 10 budget sheet, again, work in process.
Rather than having to bend over, why don't you have a seat? That might be better for you.
A farther distance is optional. Just go ahead and turn it on the mic there, Stephen. You get it close, and you're good to go. Pam, hopefully, we moved Steve Trudeau over to Counselor Freely's chair, so hopefully you'll be able to hear more clearly.
Okay, thank you.
Let me know if everything is clear for you, Pam.
Much better.
Wonderful. We'll move forward then through the packet. Again, we'll kind of hand off and bring team members up to the podium or to the microphone to give some additional feedback from their perspectives. We'll kind of talk through right now where we're at schedule-wise. So, this sheet just gives some highlight, milestone, bullet point, schedule dates. We're here today, May 7. We are looking for the committee of a whole to understand the information we're providing and asking to move forward with, understanding, we'll go to next Tuesday's council meeting for, you know, hopeful approval, looking at Bid Package 1, site improvements, and building structure. In addition, as Eric Wedge had mentioned, we're looking for approval next Tuesday to go out to bid the rest of the project that will wrap up the remaining pieces that we need to be able to finalize our overall dollar amount to you for the project in sort of locked-in, hard numbers from all the subcontractors. If we gain that approval next Tuesday, we can get it out on the streets right away. Packet of information that Eric has provided you is a full set of construction bidding documents for Bid Pack 2, and it's ready to go. So, as soon as we get a green light, hopefully next Tuesday, that'll be out on the streets. We would look to June 11 to take bids. So, we'd send out public advertisements right away, come back to the committee of a whole at the end of June, review the numbers, and look forward to maybe a July 7 city council approval of those numbers. At that point, we can lock into the guaranteed maximum price. Construction, we are looking to get started on the stadium demolition next week. Got some paperwork to get put in place after, you know, the final agreements a week ago, but that is in process. So, if we look to next week to get started, we would want to roll right into the rest of the site improvement work. of the site improvement work after that point. So that's about a two-week process to demo the stadium, starting right after Memorial Day. It would be good to start the rest of the site clearing work that falls in line with the request today to approve or on Tuesday to approve the Bid Pack 1 numbers. Our goal is still looking at the overall master timeline that we had identified for the project to do whatever we can to realize a new ice arena by fall of '21. And I think we're fairly on track for that, so the dates we're carrying and that we've put out for public bidding to be done by September 24 with the new building. That should be occupiable and usable for both the convention side and the arena side. There would still be some follow-up site work after we demolish the old miners' buildings and finish some of the grating, topsoiling, seating, those things by Halloween of next year, 2021. Any questions on those dates?
No, I don't have a question on the dates, but I want, I'll just clarify, this is a special council meeting, so we can make those decisions today moving forward to try to accelerate the process a little bit. That's the reason we held it as a council meeting as opposed to a committee of whole. But before we move in forward, let me ask Counselor Paulson, do you have any questions or comments to, at this point?
No, I'm good, thank you so much.
Counselor Biondich?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Great, yeah, we'll just kind of keep working our way through the packet. I know we were hoping to maybe put something on the screen, but hopefully the paper visual is working for everyone and the folks that are calling in remotely. So the next sheet is just an identification of what parts of the subcontracting work were included in the UNs Field Site Improvement. It really is all of the site improvements around the new Miners Arena Facility, from asphalt parking lots, landscaping, main earthwork, utilities and infrastructure, everything's included in that work. So anything outside of the building proper itself. As Eric explained, per our recommendations early on, to try to maximize time in good constructable summer months, we advised to go out with an early bid pack for the building structure and lock into those long lead items. So the Bid Pack 1 for the Miners Event Building itself took care of all the precast concrete, structural steel, cast-in-place concrete, masonry. And in addition, we did want to make sure we picked up the ice plant since that is also a design-build package and very integral part of how we look at the overall schedule. We'll get to the rest of Bid Pack 2 here a little further along. The next sheet is just a recap of those pieces that were bid. The stadium demo, again, is done, it's awarded, we're going to begin that work next week. Bid Pack 1, we're here today, there's a minor error on our timeline, the bids were actually received on the 23rd of April instead of the 16th, apologies for that, along with Bid Pack 1. Again, we're looking to get authorization to release Bid Pack 2, take bids on June 11, come back to Committee of a Whole and Council by early July and wrap things up from a pricing So the next page just lets us know kind of physically, a snapshot, where are we at? We've talked about this briefly already. Those who've driven by have noticed we have mobilized already our site office trailers to the site. So we are ready to go. Utility company has started to disconnect some of those transformers and things that were part of the existing stadium building. Hazardous material assessment, we have gotten testing and samplings done, both at the stadium building and the existing miners. There's some more sampling to go yet at the main miners' building, but we're not in a big hurry for that since it wouldn't be coming down until next year. The good news to report, there were no hazardous materials found within the stadium building itself, so that's a good clear green light for us to go ahead and get started on that work next week. That package would include with Misabi by Tubanus, removing the stadium building itself, the track surfacing, and all of the remaining parts and pieces that the school district did not wish to, you know, take away. So the foundations and remaining goalposts of the practice field and anything that's Let's kind of move into the bidding results. That's a big part of, you know, why we're here and let you know how things are looking. All in all, I guess we would like to comment that it is a very good bid market. It's a buyer's market if you go right now. Well, I think we hit the market right with this first bid package. There wasn't a lot out there yet to be looking at. It's getting busy. There are other projects out now that are starting to gain some interest, the school projects locally, as Bob mentioned earlier, I think that first Evolus School Project is bidding today. So it is important that we try to follow up and get the rest of, hopefully, this Bid Pack 2 out on the streets and keep that synergy and energy going. This first slide is the UNs Field Site Improvement piece. It's a breakdown of our estimate and the subcontractor bid quotes received, an over-under kind of snapshot of how did we fare. It is over of our budget. We had good bidding, a lot of good interest. The overage is largely in two categories, American Utilities and Landscaping. We got some recommendations on the landscaping piece that we'll get to kind of in a little bit when we talk through some of the alternates, the explanation for, you know, largely the overrun on earthwork, the design.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Could you clarify the page you're on so that, as you're flipping pages, just so that we can?
You're on page 16? I believe it is 16.
Thank you very much.
Page 16, Counselor Johnson? Yes, the heading, upper right, should say Bid Tabulation, UNs Field, Bid Pack 1, Site Improvements. So we included the items that previous slides indicated, from testing to temporary fencing, construction surveying, demolition of the main miners' building itself. Stud did also include the street lighting for the new Sixth Street that's been designed through the property, paving and landscaping, I'm sorry, earthwork, utilities, paving and landscaping. So it's about a $487,000 deficit, if you will, in our current bid numbers compared back to the design development numbers from February in this portion. And again, largely because of how our design was based at that time, we did not have the full set of information yet on the site conditions and ultimately how we needed to design around those site conditions with the deep foundations and frankly replacing a heck of a lot of existing fill that's there. We always knew there were some issues, you know, with the dirt, if you will, below the fields. We now know there's an average of 7 to 15 feet of existing fill that has to be removed and then bring back in clean, compacted granular fill. So that's a large reason for the silver run. On the next sheet, page 17, this is on the structural portion of the building component itself, Bid Pack 1 for the MEK. Again, things came in good. So on this side, we're $87,000 to the positive. This took care of, again, more testing, surveying layout, all the cast-in-place concrete systems, which would include footings, foundations, slabs, and the polished concrete finished floor at the lobby and mezzanine areas. Masonry, this is really the structural masonry component. We will have a little bit more stonework to bid in Part 2, but this is really the structural block work associated with the main building. Steel is all of the structural steel components and the ice ring package itself, ice plant, and all both sheets of ice and all the equipment associated with it, and then some excavation and backfill associated with digging in the foundations. Any questions on that so far? We'll move on to page 18 then, kind of just snapshots this together then from Bid Pack 1 work that's been bid. We have the stadium demolition, where we were sitting from, again, an estimate versus a bid. We now have the results from Bid Pack 1, both UNs Field and the MEK. Obviously, we've not bid Part 2 of the MEK, so those dollars aren't available yet. We're looking at about a just shy of $400,000 deficit compared back to our original design development estimate from mid-February or early March, just on these four pieces. So our hope is to get the Bid Pack 2 out on the streets and see if that can help bring this number back down to our original budget. Moving on to page 19, correct? And I think this will get back to Counselor Paulson's original question, how do we compare back to the overall project funding available and our current estimated cost of this total This isn't necessarily a spreadsheet, per se, we can't follow columns all the way down, so we'll just look at the first piece. Did identify the funding sources available. If everything comes to fruition through the pending dollars that we've identified, you would have $38,118,121 available. That is intended for the entire project, not just construction. So that needs to cover all of your soft costs from the fixtures, furnishings, equipment, architectural and engineering fees, other items that you've identified you would apply towards this project. Construction costs, again, from our original February, late February, early March, design development number, we were sitting at $39,160, I'm sorry, $160,516. Yes, that creates 1.3, almost 1.4 million dollar issue if we look under kind of some of the, I'm sorry, that's the potential alternates, but compared 38,118 funding available to the 39,160, we're roughly a million dollar deficit that we need to overcome still. We will show and ask today a list of alternates, and I'm going to, when we get to that, I'll probably have Carl and Eric come talk those through. But those are the decisions we'll need to understand, how do we get back to the budget moving forward? I should note that we are also anticipating, Brian's done some good work and went back and looked at fixtures, furnishings and the equipment side, and is able to reduce your available dollars for that by 400,000, so that's a big help.
Yes, Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, have we made any progress on the private partnerships, sponsorships? Is there anything that can be brought forward to alleviate that million dollar deficit?
Not currently at this time. We are still working with ISG on that. Unfortunately, this is a very bad time in our financial climate to be going to businesses to say, do you want to give us some money to put your name on a building? When a lot of, especially around here, a lot of our larger businesses, we keep seeing that they are furloughing and laying off employees. So we have to be very careful and creative of how we are going to be approaching those potential private-public partnerships.
All right, thank you for the update.
I would like to follow up with Counselor Johnson's question. ISG, did they have a, they have a performer that they presented to us a while back about what, with very conservative estimates, and what the potential for the performance of the rental space in there. The other component was there's some information about what they anticipate could be, you know, a revenue stream, not the exact amount of money from these advertisers or these sponsors or naming rights to some degree. But I remember early on, the discussion was that based on other previous projects, you know, beyond what we're dealing with now, that the revenue streams would be, as a conservative estimate, would help cover the costs associated with any deficit we may have coming forward, maybe with our FFEs, any adjustments we have to make on these alternatives moving forward. Is that an accurate assessment?
Yeah, a lot of those estimates that they were giving would be operational costs, not construction costs.
Very good. And I'm looking at the operational costs over time, you know, helping cover some of the costs associated with our construction costs are, you know, and how we make that adjustment, which we'll have to decide moving forward. But the performer that they provided was for the operational costs, but there's also some information about naming rights and how naming rights can actually be a significant benefit to help boost the revenue streams that we get outside of the operational costs in order to put aside revenues for maintenance and things in the moving forward. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Brian. Steve?
Thank you. So when we move into the alternates, again, I'll probably have Carl and Eric talk more to specifics of each one of these, but I do want to point out there will be, you know, a need legally, I think, to look at some of these alternates. And I think Counselor Bearbu, you know, was pointing that out on the R. Xavier property, how long might you have to make a decision on one of the alternates that affects the road? Sixth Street that goes through that property that I guess as we sit here today, you know, the city doesn't own, whether it's by easement or by purchase. That's not to say that we can't buy that back again, so it's a D. alternate, you would need to accept today, but we'll buy it back just as soon as, you know, the money is available or contingency dollars are freed up. But we'll kind of identify sort of a timeframe that'll help you understand each one of these decision points.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Let's just stop for a moment, and Counselor Paulson and Counselor Biondich, we are on page 20 at this point in time. Do you have any questions or comments or clarification that you need? First, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I am very concerned, now it appears that we're over 1.1 or 1.3 million, I'm trying to figure it out. And I'm concerned because we, when we approved it, I really thought we were approving all of the alternates and everything that was put forth. I think from DSGW, when Eric brought that forward. So I'm concerned why we're now at this, another huge gap. And we're talking about alternates, whether we incorporate them or not.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Could someone come forward and clarify that? Maybe Eric can. I think we looked at, I think we approved adding all these other things, you know, the canopies and all that kind of stuff. So we really have to be making some decisions moving forward on these alternates. If this, the total money that we're in deficit for includes the alternates, right? So we have to, we have to, we approve X amount of dollars, so we're looking at alternates to try to reduce that deficit that Counselor Paulson is referring to. Could you clarify, please, Eric?
Yeah, back in February, when we approved the budget, there are multiple reasons why we put the alternates in. The alternates are in there as a safety valve so that if your funding doesn't match the bid prices, we put the control to the city council to make the decisions based upon our recommendations. So all the alternates are really based upon that, to manage your funding resources with your building expectations. And yes, in a perfect world... And yes, in a perfect world, we want everything, and I think what Steve's saying is that after we bid bid package two, we will have a clearer picture of what those total construction costs are. Similar to what you saw in the differences between bid package one, Ewing's Field, and bid package one for the MEK, there were some packages that came higher than the estimate, there were some parts that came lower than the estimate. We anticipate that that will happen in bid package two. The hope is that at the end result of bid package two, that we do make these items up. So some of the items that are alternates are items that are not needed for construction this season, and they could be added easily next spring, or when you find that you are bonding for additional dollars, or when you find out that Our Savior's Lutheran Church is either selling you the parcel of property or giving you an easement to it. But as part of the legal construction documents, we can't build a road on property that the city doesn't own, but you know what that cost of that portion of road is now. And that's really the fact of these alternates, is they become, rather than looking at a potential deficit, we're empowering the council to make, as Bob had said, maybe some tough decisions now, moving forward, to accept or not accept these alternate prices to match your, your funding sources at this time. We know that your funding sources-
Can I ask a question, please?
Yep.
Go ahead, Counselor Paulson.
So Eric, when we approved, it was Site Plan One, is that correct?
Correct. That was the pack, I'll go back to your packet and I'll give you guys a page number. Page seven shows the entire site package.
Okay, so when we approved Site Plan One for the additional 5-point-whatever-million it was, my understanding is that all of the alternates were included. Now you're saying we have to decide if this is going to be in the budget or if we have to pull this alternate or not. So I, that's where my confusion is. I don't, I thought we voted on Site Plan One, which included all of the alternates.
If I may, before, Steve could probably answer that question, and I just to tack on so that you just answered the question once to what Counselor Paulson's indicating. So when we put out the budget, it's for the building construction of the building itself. These alternatives aren't in the building, we're not compromising square footage of the building. This is all exterior work for the most part. Is that correct? Steve, would you answer Counselor Paulson's question, please? Thank you.
Yeah, yes, that's, that's correct. The building, square footage, does not. I think going back to the root of where we're at and the question, what we've, what we've tried to bid out to replicate the decisions that were made previously is the full project. So we're reporting back sort of the entire project as you wish it to be. So our alternate decisions today, as we've bid them, they are actually deduct alternates. So they're included in the pricing. It's now the hard decision time to decide if you actually need to take some of those deduct alternates to get back closer to the original budget.
Does that answer your question right now, Counselor Paulson?
It frustrates me.
I'd like to also-
Under the impression that we voted for when we voted on Site Plan One. And again, it's like the furniture, fixtures and equipment, when we thought that that was included, and then all of a sudden, no, it's not. So I'm frustrated by, by what is now coming out, that now we have to decide to deduct, you know, whether it's an alternate with a canopy or whatever that exterior might look like. Again, I still thought that was included in the original approval that we gave on Site Plan One. And I don't know if any other counselors want to jump in, but that was my assumption when we voted.
Yeah, I think we approved Site Plan One moving forward with all these, everything included in there, and to make sure that we want to move forward with that, and then as we do so, we look at what a revenue stream is coming, you know, down the pike, but I'll let Steve clarify for you. Steve Trudeau.
I would like to add one item.
Go ahead, Eric Wedge.
Julianne, I think back in February, the total project cost was $38,837. That's what we just talked about with Sherri Erickson. And if you go to page 10 of your handout and packet, you know, we're looking at the total funding today as it sits, not as it sat on February 26th, when we had the meeting, of $38,118,121. So there is a difference there, a significant dollar difference there of about 600, 700,000. I just wanted to be clear on that from-
Thank you, yeah, that's what I was trying to get at with my original question a while back, this gap.
So you're seeing this gap in the numbers that we've received, it's compounded now because of your proposed funding source of additional general obligation sales bonds of $5,088,000 versus, I think, what Sherri had said was potentially $5,800,000. So I just want to be clear on what was, you know, you are correct, on February 26th, you wanted everything in it. We gave you everything, we have the prices for everything today, and I'll let Steve kind of walk through that. I didn't want to interrupt Steve, but just, I wanted to go back to our discussion on page 10 that we had earlier in the, earlier in the meeting.
I could piggyback on what Eric is saying. So at that February meeting, the council directed staff and Carl Sanderson to figure out a $38,837 budget, which we are working on, and to date, staff has only identified funding sources of $38,118,121. So there is a difference that staff hasn't figured out yet, and so this is the hard discussion we have to have. If you want staff to figure out the rest of this gap that we have, we're going to have to talk levy, direct levy, not sales tax, direct levy to the citizens. And that's just the discussion we need to have today. Do we do alternate reductions, or do we put it on the levy for the taxpayers of the city of Virginia?
And thank you, Brett, for that clarification. So what I would say is, I would like to have this discussion move forward to our finance meeting, so we can really go over this instead of voting today up or down.
Right, and I think what Carl Sanderson's asking is if you can, if we can put bid package two out, we can get some hard, fast numbers and find out if there really is a budget crunch or not. They are feeling pretty confident that the prices right now are, construction are going really well, and we may fall into the category where we don't need to levy any additional funds. We may be okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Bearbow?
Mayor and Julianne, if you can hear me. I've been around the block many, many-
I can hear you, Charlie.
Okay, I've been around many, many years on this. You don't want to be pulling out any alternate bids in today's meeting, okay? We need to go out and wait until that second phase bid is done in, going out in June until you get the results back on that. We saw plenty of time to pull out the alternates because our finished portion of our secondary bonding isn't going to happen until, until August. So you don't want to destroy this project before we see what the final tabulations may be, and that's going to be based on the bids that go out in June, and we get back in, I believe, July. So I would recommend, from my perspective, you don't pull anything out right now because we have plenty of time to take alternates out.
Yeah, we just put the bids out, so, right?
However, in big package one, the Sixth Street South extension is on property that we do not own, so we are going to have to probably pull that out for this moment until we get the Our Savior's Lutheran Church property calculated or figured out.
Why do you pull it out?
We can't award, we can't award project on something we don't own.
Property we don't own.
Now, one of the things that we can do is have KA go to the contractor and see if they will hold that price for us past the 65-day guarantee that they gave us, so that we can award it once we do own the property.
Counselor Bearbow?
That makes my job clearer with the church too then, that easement is out, basically, if we can't build on property they don't own. So it depends on what, if the church is willing to sell, that's going to be the whole issue.
We can build on an easement as well.
We can't.
We just need them to decide what they want to do.
Or you can build on easement, okay.
We just have the authority.
My understanding, what you said, we couldn't unless we own.
Yeah, we don't have any, we don't have any authority right now to build on that property whatsoever, so we need either an easement or-
You leave it in there for now, Brett, don't pull that alternate out. That's crazy because eventually that road has to go someplace, even if we have to do condemnation on that.
If the council wants, if it comes to the point of where we're over budget, that's the million dollar question. Do we pull that portion of the road out and wait to do it at a future date, or do we do that as part of this project?
Well, you're screwing up the whole project. If we're going to use that immediately as a convention center, the parking's going to get all messed up.
We can bid it out, but we can't award the bid if we don't-
No, that's what I'm saying, you can still-
Bid.
It's been a bid.
It's in bid package one.
Right, it's bid out, right?
Yep, so we need to determine are we going to award bid package one with all the alternates.
Right. So, but the bid package one went out, correct?
Those back.
Right, we have those back.
We are ready to award them if the council chooses, and then we need to go out for bids for bid package two.
So what we need to do then on this, see if the contractor's willing to hold the bid on that road, basically, is what we need to do, because if we have to award that bid, then we have to have all the other pieces in place prior to, correct Brett? And correct Steve?
It's a lot like what Bob was talking about earlier of buying things back later in the project. That is exactly what we are looking at doing at this phase.
So we will go out, talk to the folks that are involved with that portion of the alternate, which is really two main folks, it's working utilities and then asphalt paving. So the recommendation, technically, I guess, in a, you know, black and white legal world, if you don't own the property, how can you make an award on that portion? So in essence, you would need to accept that alternate to deduct that work today, then buy that back as fast as you can. You have until June 27th of this year is the bid hold period, 65 days from when those bids were taken on April 23rd. We will have an initial idea if we can hold the taking bid pack two numbers on June 11th. You know, we'll have about 10 days, you know, to let you know before the clock expires on the first part of the bid phases, to know how are we setting, give you some comfort at that point on what you can do to move forward.
Okay, I know we're getting kind of cogging the wheel here about, with this easement thing, but just to clarify, you know, those, that easement portion that we're asking for Our Savior's and it has that, my, was my understanding had been marked off already. I don't think it has been. I thought it was, but according to the board member there, that they found, they don't know where that's going to go, they have no idea. Looking at the, looking at it, it was difficult to do that, and so when they asked for an appraisal and those kind of things, I don't think we're going to get it back within 65 days, so we'll have to include it in the packet, and then, like I said, do a buyback if we can't get the contractor to do it, you know, that has to be something that we have to consider moving forward. Eric, did you have anything more that you can clarify for all of us?
I would just recommend that the council ask Carl Sanderson to talk to the little bidders to extend the 65 days to something that seems reasonable once we know when the appraisal will be back and when Our Savior's, so whether that, you know, what add an additional 60 days to the process, then Carl Sanderson can come back to the council and say, yes, they agreed to it, or no, you know, they would incur some potentially additional costs. But Steve, do you, do you feel comfortable with that?
I do. Keep in mind, the tricky part of that is, it's more than just the road itself, there are utilities underneath that road that serve this facility. As a contractor, in this case, it would be TNT Aggregates out of Grand Rapids is our, you know, apparent low earthwork and utility contractor, they need to make an order, right? So they can order all of their pipe and product now, as soon as you authorize us to proceed with an award. We'll have to be careful and talk to them on what does that mean? Can we add or subtract from that and not hurt the rest of the order, so it still gets here as fast as we can and get to work digging those utilities in?
So what's the timeframe you'll need, about the 65-day timeframe?
We'll go back and ask them what that impact would be. There's probably a fair amount of pipe they can order. Are, my own notes were, we needed immediate answer on anything Sixth Street because of those utilities mainly. You know, I'm not so concerned about the asphalt paving, that can happen next year. It's really the utilities underneath that affect the decision today.
So I think what you're saying is, is that we have to make a decision today about that, one way or the other, and the issue for the extending the contract for 65 days, that's one piece of it, but if, if we can't get an easement from the private party, then that whole roadway is gone, right?
Well, at least the west side of it, you could still build the roundabout in the east side of the road, you just wouldn't be able to finish the west portion letting out to 12th.
Yeah, but if that easement was never approved, then where does that road go? It's a road to nowhere, right?
Correct.
And that's what we articulated last year when we talked to the Our Savior's Lutheran Board. Counselor Bearbow?
Not really, it's not, not a road to nowhere, because we own the baseball field, and there's an extension out to Eighth Street, so basically, you just skip the west portion and make an L shape going in there.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, because we, the baseball fields are going to move as soon as the school built, gets theirs built, so. Where are the utilities actually, which, are they coming in from the east end? They're not coming from the west end, are they?
This is Eric. The utilities are, the intent is to loop the utilities from east to west, so that was the extension on the west side of Sixth Street. Also, in the alternates was to improve your water condition along 12th Avenue and come further to the south at the entrance and connect the water, and we have a separate cost for that. And the purpose of the alternate was twofold, one, to give the council decision, but also when we were requested to go to the IRRB for potential funding that they may do, they wanted to see these numbers broken out. Now, as far as the road going to nowhere, if Sixth Street is not constructed, we still do have a northwest drive that exits the parking lot, so you would go through the roundabout onto your parking lot and exit the parking lot north of the Sixth Street, the potential Sixth Street access point. So you do, truly, it would be navigating through a parking lot rather than a road, but it's not a road to nowhere.
Well, I use it as a facetious statement, but you don't want to run people exiting through a parking lot. That was a big deal about safety and danger and things of that nature, right?
Absolutely, in a perfect world, Sixth Street goes through.
Thank you. So we're stuck on this one issue here, but it needs to be clarified, right? So what is the answer to move forward with this? Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, I guess if we're looking at the overall budget, a concern I would have is on page 16, 32F landscaping, that, the landscaping portion is 23, $230,000 over the bid. I can't imagine anything is that important in the landscaping, I'm guessing that's lots and lots of trees and grass. I would think that if we just, I don't know, again, I'm learning in construction, but if we told them that our budget for the landscaping is 162,240, and we want you just to fill in that proportion with whatever trees or whatever works, that would save us $230,000, which then at the, on page 18, that would bring our over budget or down to approximately $162,000. So I think that's one of those things that is in here as a line item, that is the pretty stuff that we don't have to have. I'm guessing some of that is, I know some of it is grading and, and making sure the water's going in the right place, but if we're going to look at, at cutting something, there's, there's two-thirds of our problem right there, so I would ask that we look very closely at that line item and see if we can just get what we can get for the- and see if we can just get what we can get for the anticipated $162,000.
Any line item that can be added on later on should be up for consideration. Landscaping would be the largest one. Bob, did you have something you'd like to add before we go to Eric?
Go ahead, Eric.
Eric Wedge, go ahead, Eric.
I think Counselor Johnson, we were proactive coming to this meeting. We've already had a preliminary discussion with our landscape architect, Todd Hollinan, and he's preparing some documents that Steve can go to the perspective, low bidder, to re-quote some of that, understanding that you guys do have a tree program and that maybe memorial trees or things like that could assist with that. So the design team does agree with your logic on thinking of reducing the landscaping because it doesn't truly affect the overall programming of this space. What we've previously talked about is just maintaining that front plaza and focusing our landscaping where the touch points where you have most of your interaction with your clientele and then customers.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make, I'm going to make a quick comment. My, this is me personally. I think this landscape budget is way beyond the pale. And I don't know if there's a state law that requires we have so much green space or not, but instead of a tree, I'd like to see a monument, a statue or artwork or something like that that accentuates this. And I know we talked about that at length. So can you answer that question for me? Are we required by law to have some green space? And if so, do we need this much of it?
We're working through that with the B3. If you recall, your funding is based upon B3 review and approval. So there are some shade trees that are required to reduce the heat island effect of parking lots and things like that. That's why we're working through that with Todd currently.
Okay, thank you. Steve, please continue. Sorry for interruption.
No, that's exactly what we're here to talk about. And we knew this would be a big part of the discussion is to understand, you know, how far we consider some of these alternates today versus which ones could be pushed out, if you will, and looked at in 60 days or even next spring. But we did want to, you know, at least to make sure we talk a lot, you know, and make sure you understand alternate C, which really is that west portion of Sixth Street that does encroach on the property that you don't own today. But hopefully in a week or two, you would own.
Well, I don't know if in a week or two we would own that.
Or, or a month or two.
We'd like it to be tomorrow, but I think it's going to take a little while. Counselor Birbu.
Brett, do we have any idea how long the appraisal work will take on that?
I'm still waiting for the quote.
Okay. Do we have to do re-engineering for pins and stuff on that property too? Or are those already established?
Those are established.
We don't have to do that portion anyway?
I'm just waiting for the quote from the appraiser.
Okay, okay. I hope it's not the same one we had originally for that other...
Not the one we used for progress.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Steve?
So I think I'm going to let, you know, let's have Carl come up together with Eric and talk through the rest of these alternates. Certainly the landscaping notion is on this list, even though it wasn't a bid alternate. It's certainly an opportunity of cost reduction. In addition to these that are on the list, we're continuing to work with Eric and the design team to identify other cost opportunities, saving opportunities. There were some voluntary alternates that were offered by some of the bidders. We are talking through with the design team and feel there may be some $30,000 to $50,000 worth of opportunity there as well. So Carl?
Carl McGurn from Kraus Anderson Construction. Carl, welcome.
Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to take an opportunity just to circle back to page 19.
Page 19?
We were talking about, you know, this presentation, what it's representing is today, the cost that we have bid and are estimated. A portion of that's bid out and a portion of that is still estimated. And what's missing from this page 19 is a comparison of what was approved back in February, that budget amount. So in comparison to that budget amount, the actual costs that are at bid and estimated are underneath that approved amount. Bring light to that and share that. Talking through these alternates on this list on page 20 here, these are the currently bid alternates. And these were in our bidding documents that went out. So these are hard numbers that are committed to by our subcontractors.
Carl, just to make, these, all these on page 20 were in bid package one?
Yes, yep. So what's not identified on this is, you know, that bid package one was separated by two different, we called them two different packages, but really from our perspective, it's one package. And that's what we're looking at today. But, you know, the alternates with the letters are the civil or the site works. Then the alternates with the, the numbers apply mostly to the building. But the alternate A, omission of the west parking lot. If you look back on page seven, it shows that site plan. It's not the entire west parking lot. It's just the portion of that. That's what that amount would be. It's, there'd be leaves, leave some parking spaces on the west side of the building and then omit part of that parking lot. The north drive would still remain in that, in that case. Hard to depict what, what all these alternates mean by not looking at the actual drawing of where they're pulled out, you know, taken apart.
If I could towards, to help with that, we inserted to the back end of your packet. If you go back in about nine or 10 pages, you'll see a sheet labeled C15.
Yes.
And that would depict what this alternate A is.
Really, for the people on the phone, unfortunately, those sheets are probably not in your packet. We've added those just for clarity, handing them out in this, when we got to this discussion.
I did scan in this packet today and sent it to them.
Oh, they got it. So hopefully they're able to reference that. So you can see what alternate A would mean. Same with alternate B. That's that north drive. I would pull that out.
So Carl, can I, may I, Mayor?
Yeah, Counselor Birbu.
So Carl, what I'm looking at here does not include the space where the miners, if I look at that, it's going to be torn down, correct? For parking, because that is not going to be parking eventually?
Go ahead.
Eric Wedge from DSGW could answer Counselor Birbu's question.
I guess Charlie, the intent when we tear the miners memorial building down in the back rink is that those will be, a topsoil will be put in place and those will be ceded inside it. There is no additional parking going in that location as the documents, the design development documents that were presented on, in February and as the final construction documents. When we talked about east parking lot, we always talked about the existing east parking lot that is north of the miners memorial building. And that is still bid in this packet of bid package one as a mill and overlay. And then as we get further into it, there was an alternate to do further parking lot improvements would mean dig up the soil and put new good granular fill underneath it and really compact it well. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, no, it really doesn't because if we're going to promote and use this as a huge convention center, how many spaces are being cut down by this alternate removal? I'm concerned because we've got a 500 capacity convention center or potential up to 2,000 if you use the floor space of the ice arena for a big convention. You're going to cut your parking stuff down way too much for the amount of vehicles. It may possibly there, if you get in a League of Minnesota Cities Conference up here, you're talking more than our capacity of our arena, actually, for people that go to those. So why are we wasting a space, important green space where the old miners used to be? That doesn't make sense to me.
We, as a design team, could look at turning that into a parking lot. That parking lot would come with a cost, but we could come back to the council at a future date of what that would be for additional parking when the miners...
That's what I'm looking at, not in this current year. I can go along with the alternate right now. But talking down, after the miners is gone, that's two years from now, basically, or close to it.
Yes, you could...
And do that afterwards if we can find some additional funding, which we might be able to for, through IRRB, through CDPG and some of those other things that are out there.
I agree, Charlie. That could be turned into a future parking lot and/or it could be turned into a future retail development, hotel development that maybe would provide their own parking that could really create that private-public partnership that this project is really looking to develop in that portion of town. So I agree.
Yeah, thank you. Does anybody need a break? Anybody need a break? Are we good? Okay, Counselor Barnzelli had a question first and then we'll go and see if Counselor Beyondich and Counselor Paulson have any comments at this juncture. Counselor Barnzelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, at one of the early meetings, maybe in February at the miners, weren't the buses going to go and unload in the back or on the west side of the building? The hockey teams or whatever?
Counselor Barnzelli, if you want to refer to C15 of your packet or we can go back to the, I have to, page seven. We do have bus drop offs currently planned. So we have a bus drop off, the ability to put two buses in the entry plaza on the south side of the building. We do have the ability to put two to three buses for players on the north side of the building. We did at one point in design, had bus drop off on the west side of the building too.
That's what I was talking about.
But we thought that that was a little bit of overkill for this size of facility and the fact that we have the ability to have five buses parked around your building to do the drop off and pickup. The reason why we took the bus parking out on the west side of the building was specifically related to American Disabilities Act in that we moved the handicap parking to where that bus parking used to be in one of those previous versions. What that allowed is that allowed people in wheelchairs not to have to cross traffic to get into the entry plaza or to get into your building. So you're seeing handicap parking now on the west side of the building.
And that's where they would get out of their vehicle and be pushed into the building on the west side?
We have handicap parking on the south side of the building. We have handicap parking on the west side of the building. And we do have handicap parking on the east lot too that is being reconfigured. So you have coverage for American Disabilities Act in three locations. And depending on the event that they are going to, whether it's the main arena, the secondary arena or the convention center, we are complying with all of the code requirements related to ADA.
And a couple of minutes ago, you said to the, to the west, is there a lot of room west of the back of the miners to 12th Avenue then for, for construction of a building? Or are we going to try to develop that for future? The back of the rink won't, back of the miners won't go all the way to 12th Avenue, will it?
It does not. So the west, between the miners building and the 12th Avenue is all parking right now. So any type of future commercial development that you would have on this parcel of property, you would need to look at where your current baseball field is, potentially acquiring all of our Savior Lutheran Church's property or where you are removing the existing miners in back rink would be developable as a public entity or a commercial development. Also, in this block, you would have the armory property. Should that owner decide to sell to a private development, that parcel of property would be available too. And part of that would be all the parking that's related to the baseball field. You know, between the armory and the baseball field, you own a bunch of parking there too that would be developable for a commercial development.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Barnzelli. At this juncture, Counselor Paulson, do you have any questions so far?
I think I'm tracking so far. I just, I'm a little concerned that I'm hearing some red flags regarding the easement. And so I'll just continue to listen, but I just feel like that might be an issue.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Counselor Beyondich?
Thank you. No, I'm following along and I think I'm going to save my questions until we get to the end in case somebody else answers them in the meantime.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Carl?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Coming back in, I think it kind of addressed, we talked a lot about alternate C and to further address Counselor Paulson's concerns about that, we have, there's some solutions there that we're working through. So we have some options. It's not a, this, it's not an on or off type of deal and we can, we can move forward and we can find a solution there. But alternate C, we kind of know what that all entails. It's basically on all of that, our savior's property, current, currently owned by our saviors. Alternate D is the omission of that, that roundabout. Not a, not a favored alternate, but it's something that's bid. So you understand what that cost could be if you chose to go a direction, you know, moving that from the project. Alternate E is the addition of a water main coming from 12th Avenue. And what that would do is allow for a greater, you know, easement of development in the area. It gives water resources to that property in a greater fashion than it currently is. It just makes it a little more appetizing for a developer to move into that area.
It, it also loops the water system for the capacity that I think the fire chief would probably like to see as well. Gives you, you know, really a little water on all sides of the development property, including the miners.
And it's a, it's an add. It's, it's a want, not, not a need currently. It's not required by the fire department or any code currently. It's just would make that property more appetizing to further development. Alternate F is the omission of the east portion, which would be basically through the existing parking lot now. That's another unfavored item, but you understand the cost of what that would be if that was removed from the project. Alternate I is an add alternate to the existing parking lot if we were to fully reconstruct that. Currently it's bid out. As a mill and overlay, as Eric alluded to earlier, basically we're just going to chew up the top, you know, level it out, basically make it look brand new. Just the underneath supporting soil would not be amended in that case. That's what that cost would be. It'd be a further additional infrastructure in that parking lot and amended soil to give the parking lot a better base.
Yeah, as we gained more clarity from the soil boreings and geotechnical report, there is existing fill that's below that lot that's not good. So it, as we looked at this previously, we decided to leave the mill and overlay in the basement of the project. And then since this work wouldn't really need to be done until next year, you can identify some, you know, contingency savings that might buy this if you wish to have a fully constructed core it out, dig three feet of soil out, compact it back in and put new asphalt down.
And what that would do is ensure the longevity of that parking. The next two items identified with the Xs, those refer to those landscaping options. And this is what we were able to work through with the apparent low bidder for that scope. And they were, you know, able to identify some items that could be removed as we've talked about, that would not really reduce from the bricks and mortar value of the property in the building that we're looking to construct, but could also be installed, you know, at a later date.
Yeah, if I could add to that a little bit, Eric pointed out a good item after I think Counselor Johnson asked about this opportunities as well. We're really looking to the landscape designer, Todd Hallen, and to vet through kind of their own... to the landscape designer, Todd Allen, and to vet through kind of their own recommendations back to us and to you, so you can prioritize opportunities of what you could, you know, reduce. For instance, some of the site furnishings may wish to be kept. They included some of the protective stone and steel bollards at the front of the building at the plaza drop-off to prevent vehicles from driving onto the plaza. He certainly is gonna recommend you keep those. We'll identify some of those costing items for you, but just know that we're vetting that out further with Todd, and we'll come back with a good recommendation of how much we could be able to vet out in cost savings from landscaping.
If I can interject real quick, please.
Councilor Johnson?
I would also like to remind the landscape people that we have rock sling around within the city that we can pick up and we don't have to purchase. I know the mayor has indicated that mining companies have been more than willing to, quote-unquote, donate large chunks of material. So, I would, you know, as simple as that sounds, I would really like to make sure that we're looking at those and taking those folks up on those options, because why should we pay for chunks of rock that we can go pick up at cost to the city? I mean, we have dumpsters, we have bulldozers, we have trucks. So, those are the kinds of things that I'd like to see, so we're really making sure that we're utilizing our resources on hand.
Thank you for that, Councilor Johnson. And those are things that we are being, are being considered in that conversation with the apparent low bidder, and Carl Sanderson has a very good relationship with that low bidder, and we have the ability and autonomy to work with them to do that. So, thank you for that. Moving on to alternate one, the, and alternate two, those are the omission of the canopy. Again, an option that we bid out, knowing that it does not affect the bricks and mortar of the building, and it's something that could be added in later, and we wanted to understand those costs, so if that happened. With those two alternates, we also need to keep in mind in bid package two, that I'll go on to talk about here in a minute. There are some additional items that will be bid in there that will affect those costs. So, what we need to understand is, if we choose to remove those, if we did choose to remove those, that that would take some scope away from bid package two, so there would be a further savings beyond what's shown there. Alternate three and four refer to the precast finishing, and I'll probably have Eric come up and explain the difference in these that are laying out on the table here. He's got a couple of samples that will give us a good idea of if we went with one of these reduction options, what that would look like.
Before we get there, Mayor, may I ask Carl another question?
Counselor Bearbo.
Carl, those canopies, omissions, I have a concern with that. You're gonna have the driveway going right under those canopies, correct? People with handicaps, no?
The driveway would not be.
So, there's no let-off under a protected space? Is that what you're telling me? That's crazy. You have people with handicaps, it's raining, snowing, whatever. You need, like, most elegant places have a let-off spot with a canopy. I don't care. You go anyplace down in the Twin Cities, it has decent facility, motels, hotels, whatever, and places that you go. Why would you want to have your public, where they have people with handicaps, other things, be at your venues and not have a protected place to let them off? I have a problem with that personally. I know it's a big cost, but... So, what are these canopies, then? Just little things over the doorway?
Covered walkways to the door, so at least you can get to the sidewalk of the building, and you can walk in underneath something.
That's a waste of time.
Better than nothing, yeah.
A waste of money for that, you know, if you're gonna walk.
Eric, could you give some clarification here to Counselor Bearbo?
I didn't look at the design. I assumed those canopies around the doorways, where you'd have a road coming in to let people off.
Well, I'll refer you to page A0.2 reference sheet. It's in your packet. It was one of the drawings that was added for clarification. There's the...
What's the page number for Counselor Bear, Counselor Biondich and Counselor Paulson's, where they can refer? Where are we?
Part of the back of the packet, A0.2. That's the sheet number.
The back of the packet, A0.2?
It's the, it's, or we can go to, Steve, thank you for that. Steve has a way better solution than going to the construction documents.
Okay, so where are we going?
So, we're gonna go to the page two of your packet. There was the agenda and the front cover sheet of your packet that says miners' event and convention center project update Thursday, May 7, 2020.
Page two of the handout.
So, the two canopies that Carl is talking about, and omit arena entrance canopy A, that would be the canopy that is just off of the entrance plaza. So, to answer Counselor Bearbo's question is that, yes, you do have to traverse the plaza before you get underneath the canopy. But if, per se, staff or customers are coming to your building prior to the doors unlocking, and there is some type of a weather event, they have the ability to be under that canopy until you allow them into your lobby. Similar on the convention center side, that runs the whole south side of the convention, is the canopy, which would provide coverage. You could drop somebody off on the new Sixth Street, and they could get into that area relatively easily. Otherwise, is they have to traverse from the east parking lot. They do have to cross the street before they get under the canopy, but then they do have the ability to be protected from weather events in the canopy. So, those are the two canopies that we're talking about. And I can tell you that when we did our arena tours, for those of you that went on the arena tours, of the four arenas that we toured, not one of those arenas had a medical arts hospital clinic under canopy drop-off. And I would suffice it to say that even if you, well, if you go to the XL Center for the Minnesota Wild, you don't have a direct drop-off underneath a canopy unless you utilize one of the parking structures and then get in a skywalk that connects you to this facility. So, when we presented the documents on February, we never had a drive under canopy. It does create some challenges for your fire department in the fact that, you know, if there is an incident with a vehicle underneath it. One of the things that we were able to work out with your fire marshal and Bill Cole was that these canopies technically are loosely connected to the building, but not by a code standpoint connected. So, you do not have to provide fire sprinkler protection to them. The city has had problems in the past with freezing of the sprinkler lines in the canopies and causing issues with that. So, we have a loose slip joint connection between them and the building just to prevent the rain from getting through that little joint, but technically, from a structural standpoint, they are three separate structures, the buildings and each of the canopies.
Counselor Bearbo?
He's answering my question. If the other arenas that you toured and stuff don't have those, then I guess I don't have a problem with eliminating that. I do have a problem with one other thing, but, you know, we're getting into minutia now, and we're gonna take another hour to get this done. That roundabout, I would still leave that for future, because if you come out on Eighth Street, which we're planning to do in the future, you know, it's a big cost savings, but if you had to go put it back in, it's only gonna be more costly. You can still dead-end a roundabout, so eventually, we're gonna have Sixth Street going all the way through anyway. But I know they were talking about going back out on Eighth Street. Wasn't that part of the plan when the baseball field goes?
That would be a future plan, and that's why the roundabout was there, to have traffic be able to create another outlet, so you could go east, west, and south when you were at an event. Plus, it might be an amenity to a future developer that would want to develop on that baseball parcel of property.
And if you look at the cut-down of the parking lot to the west, you've got that roundabout eliminated, but if it's there, it's still beneficial for the property, because I'm assuming that the only way to get in from the other one is that little half-moon portion to get in from there, instead of having a bigger area to get in if you've got a lot of traffic. But you can still come out the north, or is that being eliminated, too, the north entrance out? Looks like that's being eliminated. Alternate means you gotta block in even smaller parking lots. You only got one way out, or around the building to the north, I guess, you go to. But I look at it this way. If you're gonna build it, and you're gonna build it to what we just talked about, for bringing big conventions up, you're bringing multiple, bringing events, your concerts, et cetera, you don't want to screw up your parking. That's an important portion of any convention center. You know, that's my personal opinion when you go. You know, what do malls and stuff do? They make big parking lots, because they wanna accommodate the amount of people. You know, eventually, you're gonna have concerts and everything in that place. That's what the plan is, to hire a event coordinator or planner, correct? I still think we need to wait until we see what the alternate or the bids come back in June before we, I don't know, you can't, we've got 65 days. That brings us to July, right?
June 27.
Well, close to July. Thanks, Steve. But I would wait until then before we pull those alternates, to see how they come in, because the bids will be in before that. That's just my opinion. I'm not gonna say anymore. Thank you.
I agree. We put the bids out, they come in. If you don't have the money paid, we don't accept the bid. It's as simple as that. I think that's what we're, to try to move this forward a little bit more. So, thank you, Counselor Bearbo.
To reiterate what my point was, too, with when it comes to the alternates, I think every alternate in there is really important, and I would hate to see any of them go. However, if we can get the subcontractor for that Sixth Street South extension to just give us some more time to work this out with our Savior's Lutheran Church, we go out for bid package two, see where the bids come in, and then we have this discussion again at the end of June, where are we sitting at? And then Sheri and I, Sheri and I can work a little bit more with our bonding agency. We can get them here as well and talk about how all this is gonna work out.
And we can push.
Right.
And we can push the church thing faster. We need a minimum, once the stuff is done, of 30 days is all.
Yeah, something, anything, just, I just needed some indication from our Saviors which way they wanna go, and they were still at an impasse when we talked to them.
Yeah, by our bylaws at the church, you have to have 30 days to advertise it in a paper, send out a letter to everybody, et cetera, but it can be done in 30 days. So, that's, you know, if we get the other work done. We're not talking a ton of time. We can get it done by, I'm guessing we can get it done before September.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Paulson, any further comments or questions before Carl continues?
No, and I do, Britt, I really appreciate kind of your perspective as to how this should go forward, and I think it would be important to have George have that financial conversation. But I would put it also that I would not want any of those alternates to go away, but if we're faced to, I guess, in a levy situation, I would never vote to levy for those additional dollars. So, I think I'm comfortable moving forward to go out for the bids, get the extension from our Saviors, and just see where this lands. But I don't want us to come back to the table and have a discussion about a levy.
Yeah, and Counselor Paulson, I think that's the worst-case alternative that I don't think any of us wanna go to. So, I think by moving forward with bid package two, letting those bids come back, and then at that time, we'll see where we're at with finances, and then we can determine whether or not what we wanna cut. So, I think that's good strategy moving forward, and I agree, I would never wanna look forward to adding a levy on top of this. This wouldn't be a, it would be a difficult sell for our community, and that's not what we intended this project moving forward to do. So, thank you for that perspective, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Biondich, do you have anything you'd like to add before we move forward?
No, I'm paying in and following along as best I can, and like I said, I'll probably have questions at the very end. Thank you.
Okay, we're almost there. Carl?
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna talk about the precast panel option, and Eric can probably explain it a lot better than I can. He's brought some op, you know, samples in here. And I also wanted to take a step back before we go into that, and then just explain, you know, part of the intent of these alternates was also to understand the breakup of the cost that compromises this, to go and find those alternate funding options with IRRB and et cetera. So, it's also, it's an option, so we can, if we came in over budget, now we can pull back a little bit and also understand how to go get that further funding.
Thank you, Carl. Eric, where?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna try and talk low and still be vanna and hold this sample up, but the base bid of the project is a sample that you guys have already seen for the main arena. And this, this is the architectural precast that was selected. You can see that it has different finishes to it, a smooth, a rough, and a semi-textured finish. The alternate number three was revised, the precast to just be like your sidewalk, a smooth gray, but still keeping the reveals that are shown in the documents. And then the last alternate would be just a plain gray building with no reveals. And it's not what the design team, you know, recommends here today. We're just giving you guys the choice to understand. We understand that this building is going to stand for, you know, as long as your existing miners had 75 years, and we want to make, you know, and this is a large building in town, so we wanna make sure that it is architecturally pleasing to the eye. But at the end of the day, we don't hold the checkbook. You guys do and have to make the decision. But this would be the precast for the main arena. So, those sitting on TV, I don't know if the camera is picking it up, but this was what the base bid was about.
Yeah, they can see it.
Also, also included in the base bid is similar to what you have across the street with the Government Service Center. On the convention center side of things, we do have brick. So, it's not face brick, it's brick, but it's integrated into the precast, which gives that the character that you've seen in the renderings that we've put forth before. I just wanted to be clear on those two alternates, that, you know, regardless of what you do for the main arena, the brick always remains on the convention center.
In addition to that, just to add some clarity to those two alternates, three and four, it's an either-or kind of option, and there's not a compounded effect, you know, to save $300,000. It's one, simply gray cement with reveals, and the other option is gray cement with no reveals.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. And for me, personally, I don't care what you put on there, myself. If the design team makes a recommendation and that's what they want, I'm good with that, just so long as we could fit it into the budget. That's my only feel.
I understand, and just, this may just be, this is a personal opinion, but I really just don't wanna see a big gray box. I like, I like the texture and I like the design. And so, if we can do anything we can to keep that design there, not just have this big gray, smooth box, it would be great.
Well, I spent enough time in a correctional institution, not as a, not as a, a guest, but as, in my past profession, and the four, you know, as I was saying, those these four gray walls that surround us, we don't want that in either. So, whatever is beyond the pale, that's, for me, that makes sense. So, okay, thank you. Carl, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and it's meant to just give some options. One of the, that would not be a recommendation, that'd kind of be the last option you'd wanna pick, because it is removing value from the building that you can't really put back later.
I get one chance to do that, and so if we do the smooth, that we're having that forever, a big institutional gray box, or we're going to have something a little more pleasing.
As opposed to, you know, some of the site options, those are, can be added back later, much easier than, you know, reveals on a precast part of the building.
Yeah, like the neighbor told me across the street, I don't wanna be looking at a piece of garbage. a, at a piece of garbage. I want to be looking at a nice, thick place. So it's outside, aesthetics means a lot to the community. So, thank you.
And we appreciate that.
Could I ask a couple of questions?
Yes. Please do.
Sorry, thank you.
Yes, Councilor Paulson?
So does that, does that include the brick exterior option that we had looked at? The actual brick on the front of the drop-off site?
This is Eric. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear previously, but yes, the, the convention center on both the east, west, and south elevations will still be the brick. And I can show the face brick for the camera, for those people watching this meeting online. But this was the color of face brick that was selected.
And is that the one, I'm sorry, I can't totally see, but is that the one with the pinkish hue?
It is more, it has reds and browns and somewhat of a pinkish hue, depending on the daylight that you're at. But I think what you were referring to in the pinkish hue is, we had brought pre-cast panel samples for the main arena that had more of a pink or salmon color. And that has been revised to what we have in the council chambers today, which Brian Silver has presented to you guys in the past. It's more of a bright white color. There are, the exposed aggregate probably gives it maybe a little bit of a salmon color, but not nearly as pink as the previous options. The options before were extremely pink.
Thank you for that clarification, Eric.
Yeah, we, we don't want sheep finishes.
No.
Bad, we don't want those. Gotta add just a little humor and levity here, so as we move forwards. Carl, please continue, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and to add more clarity to that from a cost perspective, Councilor Paulson, those, that brick and what Eric was just showing you in that sample is included in that base bid. So these, these alternates would reduce the cost, and it would take away the aesthetics. Hopefully that clarifies that a bit.
It does clarify it, but I think from the design that I'm picturing, and I don't know exactly which, when you proposed it, it was more like a shale brick.
Uh, Eric?
The brick that I have here has more of a fissured look to it. It probably just doesn't come through on the camera or the picture, so.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it does, Counselor. So I can leave these samples in the council chambers. The process that would go for the approval of this is first the approval to accept the bids today. The contractors then release the contracts. We get shop drawings back from the pre-cast manufacturer that we review before we release the documents to fabrication. In talking with the pre-cast fabricator during bidding, there are three different finishes of the brick, and we could change that finish that doesn't really affect the price. Again, I'd have to confirm that with the pre-cast bidder in Kraus Anderson. But when we asked that question to them, they said it doesn't matter on the surface finish of the brick. But we do have more of that shale fissured type of look brick than a smooth brick. And if it's coming through the camera as smooth, that's not the intent. So with the documents, I will leave both of these samples here, so that any of the counselors that can't be present today can come to the council chambers and take a look at them.
Does that answer your question, Councilor Paulson?
Yes, thank you. And I didn't mean to get so micro into detail, but like Britt said, we have one chance to do it, and I just want to make sure we're doing it correctly.
Yeah, as my grandpa used to say, as an Italian from way back when, he wanted to look nice. So we all want to make sure this looks really nice, so. So thank you, Councilor Paulson.
And Mayor, my grandpa was a carpenter, and he always told me, measure twice, cut once. So being attention to detail at this stage, I would welcome any counselor when we review the final package of pre-cast shop drawings, if they wanted to come to my office or have me come to City Hall, just to make sure that we have all of the colors selected and meeting the intent of your vision.
Uh, thank you, Eric. Carl?
Thank you. Yeah, to add more, not to belabor it, but there is more options for colors and things like that, you know, forthcoming. We don't, we don't, we're not making that decision today. We're just making a decision on major design to that scope, so.
Very good.
That's what that, that alternate item refers to. All right. Moving along to the next page, page 21, talk about what's forthcoming in what we're asking to go out to bid with what's sitting on the table and what's been sent out in the packet for bid package two. There's a list of scopes, 24 items there. You can see it, not as major cost scopes, but there's a lot of smaller, you know, scopes in, in cost perspective that go along with, in this. And it includes all the finishes, you know, doors and windows, signage, fireplaces, the seating, the, we, we will be bidding the dasherboards in this package, just to understand that cost. And that's a little bit conflicting with what we've presented prior in the budget. We will also, same with the food service equipment, we will be doing that, just to do that legwork for the city, understand that cost. And if it doesn't make sense to leave in this package, we don't have to accept those bids, we'll just take those out. And that'll be procured in a different fashion, through a different, you know, method. And not through our construction contract. Other items, you know, the, the major, major items that will be in these, in this bid package are the mechanical, the electrical, and combined HVAC and plumbing, and then the communications and AV, that'll be some major items that will be included in that packet.
What's the total, just, I just want to make a comparison. What was the total cost of that approximate, would you think that would be?
For those?
For mechanical and electrical upgrades, or?
Huh?
For, well, I guess I don't, I don't even know that. All I want to say is that way back when, before this even came about, we, we were trying to get money from the ITRB or from the legislature to, for a phase one or phase two. Part of that was the electrical and mechanical upgrades, which were spent at that time between three and a half and four and a half million dollars. You can imagine if we would have done it back then, how much money we would be saving, based upon what we're doing now. So I just want to say that we're taking the prudent approach moving forward to try to get this accomplished quickly as we can. So I guess that was just a comment, and I didn't mean to interrupt, please move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate that, yeah. The, going back to the statement, doing it right the first time. But yeah, that is a large scope, it's, it's gonna be north of what you, you just stated there, Mayor. But is there any questions on what's in that scope and, or in this bid package for those scopes? And to kind of go back, there was some questions about, you know, are we, is there gonna be more bid packages after this, or is any more bidding practices or exercises? And the answer is no. This, this will conclude that bidding exercise and bring us to that final GMP amount that we will then approve, and that'll be the contract amount for the project.
So once the bids come in, we review them, we take a look what our budget is, we make decisions about the alternatives that were presented, and determine where we're at the budget. More information about our funding sources are moving forward, gives a little bit of handle on where we're at, if there's a deficit or not, and all these other numbers come in. So we're asking today is to move forward with the approval of bid package number two. So I think that Councilor Beyondich had a couple of questions, we're at the end of our presentation. Carl?
Got one more slide.
Okay, I'm sorry, one more slide, thank you.
I wanted to take the time to explain what we will be including as alternates in that bid package two, just so we understand that when we get to that conversation of, you know, if we get, get to that point where we have to make those decisions. But the alternates that we'll include are the food service equipment, the arena equipment would be the dasherboards and seating that we presume currently, we're gonna take seating out of the current miners and install that in the, in the new miners. For that, you know, reconditioning and rehabilitation. We would break out the cost of the practice rink dasherboards, just to understand that, if it makes sense to buy in this contract or not. There will be an alternate for a scoreboard, so if you do have the ability to buy up and add a scoreboard, that would be an add alternate. Deduction alternate would exclude the new arena equipment and bring the existing equipment, scoreboards. Maybe help me out a little bit, Eric, what, what else included with that?
Yeah, you, we're providing two brand-new scoreboards for the main arena. And for the secondary arena, we will be relocating your main arena scoreboards that you have there into the secondary rink.
Very, very good, thank you.
And then seven and eight there refer back to those canopies that we talked about that are currently bid out. That'd be the additional deduction of costs. So if you did choose to remove those canopies, this would further reduce that, and that the scope would be removed from this packet.
I'd like to clarify that, you know, we didn't, we just build, in bid package one, we just bid the structural steel in the footings and the foundations. We did not bid the column wraps of stone, we did not bid the roofing, we did not bid the finishes on the, the roof edge around the perimeter of the building, the steel stud work, the lights that have to go underneath those. So that's what Carl's referring to as a de, further deduction if we were to remove those canopies.
Sure, thank you. Steve, did you have something else?
Yeah, I'd like to add that we, we did put a placeholder into the numbers that we're showing on those alternates currently for bid pack one, anticipating some of the cost, but probably not all of the cost for the canopies, you know, the, the finishes. So we would, I think, as Eric pointed out, there's more things that we didn't anticipate that I think will, will find additional savings as we bid part two.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last one there, it's labeled alternate six, but it's line number nine on this sheet. That would be to remove the fitness and dry land exercise area on the second floor that's currently in the base bid, but it would be an option to deduct that cost out of there. And that's something that could easily then be again added at a later date.
Well, it's just the furnishings and the framing, so the rooms would be there, we just wouldn't have anything in them this time.
Correct.
It'd be shelled space.
Shelled space, uh, thank you, Britt, thank you, Steve.
All right. And that brings us to the end, where the actions we're looking for today. The first line refers to acceptance of alternates, we've talked through that quite a bit, it doesn't look like we want to move forward, talking about acceptance of any alternates, we're comfortable with the way they are, bid, and seeing where bid package two comes in. The second line down there is the consideration awards for the currently bid package, Ewens Field redevelopment, which is all the site work onsite, and then MECC bid pack one, which is the structure, the pre-cast, the steel, the foundation work, and utilities that come up to the building. And then the, the last would be requesting permission to release bid package two out for bidding on, in public forum.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Beyondich, we're at the end of our presentation by Carl Sanderson, and we're gonna be moving forward with the potential motion to, to take some action with respect to the request being made today. Did you have any questions, comments, or concerns at this time?
I do want to thank everybody for all the hard work they put into this. But I am still concerned about the funding and if there's a shortfall, where that money is actually going to come from. And I guess as we move through this process, we can address that, but that is one of my main concerns, that we do not have to go out for a levy, we do not ask the taxpayers for one more nickel. We have to make this work.
Yeah, I think we all agree with, with that, Councilor Beyondich, yeah, we don't want that to happen, that's for sure. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Beyondich. Councilor Paulson, anything else before we look for a motion moving forward? I think we're gonna need two motions.
Real, yeah, real quick, on page 21, item number 12, I don't know if Carl could clarify, but is that the ceiling and acoustical paneling, is that what was included in site plan one? Is that what you're going out for bid? So it was the wood slatted ceiling with the tube lighting in, in between the slats?
I would, I would ask, refer that to Eric to help us compare those two packages clearly. So Eric, if you could speak more to that?
Councilor Paulson, yes, as previously presented, it includes the wood slat ceiling for the lobby of the convention center with the integrated lighting, and also all the other specialty ceilings that were previously presented to the council.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So are we looking for two motions here? One is to accept the bids of bid package number one, and the second to potentially go out for bids for bid package two, is, are those the two that we need, or do we need three?
Three motions. Bid package one has two pieces to it, the Owens Field redevelopment, bid pack one, and then the MECC bid pack one.
Okay, so let's start with the first one, which is the, the demo of Ewens Field bid, right?
The demo, this is the redevelopment, so this would be the additional site work that goes with that, no?
Okay, so the motion would be a request to move forward with the redevelopment portion of Ewens Field, is that correct? So there's actually two in bid package one, this is Ewens Field, and then the second one would be the, for the main building. Okay, so, Councilor Barabu?
Yeah, I'll make that motion for the first one, for the Ewens Field redevelopment, bid pack one.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Johnson, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I have one, just one point, Mayor.
Uh, Councilor Barabu?
This includes all the dirt work and stuff that bid package, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, okay. So moved and supported for the Ewens Field redevelopment portion of bid package number one, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, second motion would be for the bid package one for the main building?
Correct, for MECC.
Mayor, point of order.
Yes, okay, go ahead.
Britt, do we, because we have two counselors that are not in the room, do we need to do a roll call for each of these bids, since it is a special council meeting?
Okay, well, good point, Councilor Johnson, thank you very much. Britt, I'm sorry, Pam, as a point of order, on the, on the vote, we're gonna need to take a roll call on the vote, even though it was unanimous, as a part of our council is missing, so would you please take a, a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor Boo? Paulson?
Yes.
Beyondich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Berenzelli?
Yes.
Cuffey?
And Councilor Freely is absent for the record. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, thank you, let's move to the, the next motion, moving forward with the, for bid package number one for the MECC project. Councilor Johnson?
I would move the awarding of the MECC bid package one.
Uh, Councilor Johnson moves for, for the MECC bid package one, is there support?
I'll support, Mayor.
Support by Councilor Berenzelli, is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Pam, roll call, please.
So?
Aye.
Paulson?
Yes.
Beyondich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Berenzelli?
Yes.
Cuffey?
Yes, and Councilor Freely is absent, motion carries six to zero. Okay, the last one is a motion to put out bid package number two, which is the final bid package for this project, and is for the, as outlined in the packet. Councilor Barabu?
I will so move the MECC bid package number two.
Okay, Councilor Barabu moves.
As outlined in the packet.
To approve bid package number two, as outlined in the packet, the presentation made by our staff, Kraus- made by our staff, Kraus Anderson, DSGW, and our Park and Rec Director. Is there support? Support by Counselor Baranzelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Roll call, please, Pam.
Bearable?
Aye.
Paulson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Beyondich?
Yes.
Baranzelli?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes, Counselor Freely is absent. Motion carries six, zero. Is there any further action that's going to be taken here in the MEC team? And do we have to take any more official action?
Yes, there is one other item that I do want to bring up.
Thank you.
I did mention to Kraus Anderson that we would not be taking a vote on this until the next meeting, which would be on the 12th, since the council has not had time to review this. However, there's an amendment to the construction contract that we need to consider as the original construction contract did not have the performance bond, performance payment bond. And our state funding requires that Kraus Anderson does have that in place. And so they have brought forward this construction amendment, number one to construction contract. I have forwarded it to Brian Lindsay for his review, and we will be ready to present it on Tuesday for the council meeting for approval then.
Okay, thank you, Britt. This comes to the next council meeting for approval.
If there's any questions, we have Kraus Anderson here to discuss if you would.
No, it's pretty straightforward. I think we were remiss as every place that has these kind of projects require a performance bond with state aid money. We just missed it in the contract moving forward, and this is just a requirement in order for us to, you know, access the funding. So we'll all take a look at it. I don't think I have any questions for Kraus Anderson. Does anybody, any counselor sitting here today have any questions regarding reviewing this for the next Tuesday's meeting to approve the performance bond? Okay, Counselor Paulson, do you have any other questions moving forward with this? We're going to consider this and take action next Tuesday.
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Beyondich?
No.
Okay, thank you. Pam, can I take, bring up a couple other items of concern seeing as this is a special meeting?
Uh, we're not supposed to, but it's not on the agenda.
Well, this is something we previously discussed, so I'm going to bring it up anyway. I think it'd be all right.
I do have one question before you bring that up.
Go ahead, Pam.
Just for reference on the bid package, so I can add that in the motions, the dollar amounts, I believe I have them here for the bid pack one for the MEC was $9,77,416. Is that correct?
Hang on one moment. We'll double check that. I've been looking through my documents.
And then also for the Ewens Field, $4,009,14426.
Steve, could you clarify for Pam for official record?
Those values that were listed and issued are only the cost of the subcontractors. So those are correct values. On top of that, when we are asking to do a limited authorization to proceed with those contracts, there would be the additional general conditions and Kraus Anderson fees, which I do have an estimate if you'd like us to share those.
Yes, if you would for the official record, then we can provide Pam a clarification on the total numbers for the minutes and the resolution.
Total number we will be looking at for the Ewens Field redevelopment site improvements, including Kraus Anderson's fees and general condition costs, and the apparent low subcontractors that have been provided, is $5,687,000, 038 and 56 cents.
And just one other question. Is that all of the contractors listed on the list? Or is it going to a general contractor? Or how is that?
When we do the resolution, Pam, we'll have the resolution authorizing us in terms of agreement with Kraus Anderson for this.
Okay.
For the two.
Okay.
And we'll bring that resolution to the meeting on Tuesday.
Yes, that would be to Kraus Anderson.
Okay, thank you.
The value for the miners event and convention center, bid pack one, building structure and ice plant systems, including all of Kraus Anderson's fees and general condition costs, and the subcontractors noted, is $10,552,268.60.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, two quick items. We did discuss this at the last committee, the whole meeting. I just wanted to bring them up. First of all, there was a question from Counselor Bearable regarding the Sixth Avenue Bridge, and if that's going to be filled in or not. We did get information from Matt Reed through the Minnesota Department of Transportation in that the bridge is being replaced, basically like it is now, but the structure might look a little different. But the Sixth Avenue underpass will continue to be accessible to the Ridgewood area.
Mayor, I appreciate the staff double checking on that. So I stand corrected on that. It was just partial information in a meeting I heard. So I appreciate the staff giving that correction.
Yeah, well, thank you, Counselor Bearable. And then one other thing that I, I'm going to give this to Britt to give to Pam. I received this letter from the United States Environmental Protection Agency regarding our submission to the EP for the Bronfields grant program. We did not get it. We did not get the grant, which is unfortunate. So the letter here is here for, we'll make sure every counselor gets one, sent to them by email. And if you want a hard copy, that's just fine, too. But it basically says that we did meet the criteria established for that, and there were 448 grant applications for consideration, and only 155 grants were from the highest ranking applicants. So only 155 were awarded out of 448 applicants, and we were not one of them. So just for your information. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to talk about before we adjourn the city council meeting for today?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Pam?
Just me again.
Yes.
I did send the Bronfield letter to all the council yesterday.
Okay, well, thank you very much for doing so.
Everyone should have a copy.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to say thank you to, thanks a lot, Pam. I want to say thank you to our staff, but particularly, you know, to Kraus Anderson, Mr. Fitzgerald, thanks for coming up, and Steve, and Carl, and Eric, and our Park and Rec Director, Brian, and all the counselors for, this is a really large project, and we're working through it as best we can. And we're moving to the next level. So on behalf of all of us, let's continue to move forward and get this project, get this building built. And as some people say, this is a Taj Mahal. It's not. It's a community convention center that's going to benefit our different generations to come. So thanks, everybody, for coming today. And there's nothing else to come before the council meeting. We are going to, Counselor Baranzelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, who's paying for the Sixth Avenue Bridge? City or state?
It's a MnDOT project.
It is?
Yes.
So no charge to the city?
No charge to the city. And they are going to start that next year. This year's projects are the 12th Avenue and 13th Street intersections on 53. So for the next two years, we're going to have road construction around Virginia.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And in discussion with MnDOT preliminarily, there may be some issues with the roadway under Sixth Avenue. They may affect how that roadway goes based on the construction costs. So there may be some state aid money available to repair that roadway system as well. So we'll see. Thanks. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And when we met with MnDOT at their coffee and conversation, we did make them aware of the MEC project, and they're very willing to work with Kraus Anderson about closing of those important intersections. So as long as, just so you know that there's that opportunity to have some communication. So we're not trying to get in pieces of concrete and have no direct entrance. So that is also on the, they are aware of that, too.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Okay, nothing more come before the council today. We'll adjourn till next Tuesday. Thank you, everybody. Be safe. Have a safe trip back, Mr. Fitzgerald. We stand adjourned.